But if you can say what you want to say and less than that, I really appreciate it. And I'm sure the rest of us would too. And that'll give us an opportunity to see if we can move along more quickly tonight.[10.01][10.01](APPLAUSE). When we do start in a couple of minutes, we're on Article 21. Article 21 in the annual warrant. Again, the non-voting section is the bleacher section immediately to my right. And anybody who wants to participate in the meeting, you have to have a red card tonight. Last night, it was a blue card. Tonight, it's a red card. If I can have your attention very quickly before I call the meeting to order. There's a Ford Explorer outside, mass license plate 5YM126. Your lights are on. 5YM126, lights on. Okay, we've arrived at the hour of 7:00. I'm advised by the town clerk that we have more than a quorum present. Quorum for your information, Howard, is 150 we need to start the meeting. I'm advised we have in excess of 150. So I'll call the meeting to order, the annual town meeting. And we're back at Article 21. See if the town will vote to accept funds allocated in the Massachusetts Clean Water State Revolving Fund Intended Use Plan 2025 for the purpose of sewer line construction along Queen Anne Road and East Howard. Is there a positive motion on this article? Hearing none, Mr. Hughes.
I move this article be in... Oops. Sorry, sorry. I move this article be indefinitely postponed.
It's a move and seconded that Article 21 be indefinitely postponed. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor of indefinite postponement so signify by saying aye.[291.33][291.33](APPLAUSE). And those opposed by saying no. The article is indefinitely postponed. Article 22, this is the first of our community preservation articles brought before the voters by the Community Preservation Committee. And so, as required, I'm going to recognize Mr. Nixon, David Nixon, the chair, if he's here, of the Community Preservation Committee, to give the community preservation report on these articles. My understanding is the committee is recommending all of the community preservation articles that are in the warrant, but we'll hear when we get the report. Mr. Nixon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Howard adopted the Community Preservation Act in July 2005. We are now celebrating 20 years of continuous contribution from you, the taxpayers of the Town of Howard, who choose to support open space, historic reserves, community housing, and recreation. A 3% search charge on taxable real estate along with state allocation of the primary sources of revenue for the Community Preservation Fund. Last year, 2024, town meeting voters, you, the taxpayers, supported $1,840,200 in funding for CPA warrant articles. In anticipation of the 2024 Annual Town Meeting, the Howard Community Preservation Committee vetted and deliberated on 12 projects. Two projects were withdrawn, and one project did not qualify for CPA funding. This evening, we are asking you to support nine applications. The Town of Howard's Affordable Housing Trust, Regional Independent Living Units for Artistic Young Adults, the Cemetery Gravestone Preservation, the Boardwalk Design Impermiting Near Herring River Belzneck Area, the Brooks Park Improvements in the partnering with Howard Conservation Trust to produce and preserve 50 acres of cranberry bogs and their uplands to protect the water quality and preserve the scenic views on the Cape Cod Rail Trail. These applications, in their total requests, are $1,661,015. We hope that you, the taxpayers, town meeting voters, will support our 2025 recommendations tonight. Sincerely, the Howard Community Preservation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon.
Thank you.
So we'll go to the first of the community preservation articles, which is Article 22. See if the town will vote to approve and allocate the following additional funds into the Open Space Reserve Historic Preservation Reserve and the Community Housing Reserve from the FY 2024 Certified Undesignated Fund Balance to ensure the individual reserves reflect prior year revenues from fiscal years '21, '22, '23, and '24. And then the appropriations are listed. Open Space, $350,581.51. Historic Preservation Reserve, same number. Community Housing Reserve, same number. Mr. Hughes.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I move Article 22 be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that $350,581.51 be transferred from the Community Preservation FY 2026 Undesignated Fund to Open Space Reserve, and that $350,581.51 be transferred from the Community Preservation FY 2026 Undesignated Fund to Historic Preservation Reserve, that $350,581.51 be transferred from the Community Preservation FY 2026 Undesignated Fund to Community Housing Reserve.
Motion is made and seconded. It's to accept and adopt the article and to do the transfers that are outlined in your warrant in each one of those buckets, Open Space Historic Preservation and Community Housing, in the amount of $350,581.51. Is there any debate on Article 22? Obviously, as you heard from the report of Mr. Nixon, the Community Preservation Committee is recommending favorably on this article. Any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor, the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.[588.29][588.29](APPLAUSE). And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 23, see if the town will vote to hear and act upon the report of the Community Preservation Committee on Fiscal Year 2026 Community Preservation Budget as required by General Laws Chapter 44b, Chapter 149, Section 298, and the Acts of 2004, and to reserve for the future spending the following amounts from the Community Preservation Act Fund FY 2026. Estimated annual revenue is recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, with each item considered to be a separate appropriation. I'm not going to read each item. They're listed in your warrant in the block. Mr. Hughes.
I move Article 23 be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that $270,000 be transferred from Community Preservation FY 2026 Estimated Revenue to Open Space Reserve, that $270,000 be transferred from Community Preservation FY 2026 Estimated Revenue to Historic Preservation Revenue, that $270,000 be transferred from Community Preservation FY 2026 Estimated Revenue to Community Housing Reserve.
Motion is to accept and adopt Article 23, and it is to transfer the estimated community preservation revenues into the three buckets, Open Space Historic Preservation and Community Housing. Community Preservation Committee has recommended favorably this article. Any debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote. All those in favor, the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.[683.12][683.12](APPLAUSE). And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 24, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $50,000 from FY 2026 anticipated revenue to fund the administrative expenses of the Committee Preservation Committee and to act fully thereon. Mr. Hughes.
I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that the sum of $50,000 be transferred from FY 2026 Undesignated Revenue for this purpose.
Motion is accept and adopt. The sum is $50,000, and it's to be transferred from the undesignated revenue for this purpose. Any debate? This is for the administrative funds of the committee. Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor, the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.[726.12][726.12](APPLAUSE). And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 25, see if the town will vote to appropriate $10,000 from the Certified Community Housing Reserve for a grant to the Lower Cape Housing Institute and to act fully thereon. Mr. Hughes.
I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that $10,000 be transferred from the FY 2024 Certified Community Housing Reserve for this purpose.
Motion under Article 25 is accept and adopt. The sum is $10,000. It's to be transferred for the Community Housing Reserve purpose. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor, the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.[768.98][768.98](APPLAUSE). And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 26, see if the town will vote to appropriate $500,000 from the Certified Community Housing Reserve to fund the Howard Affordable Housing Trust. Mr. Hughes.
I move that Article 26 be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that $346,679.20 be transferred from FY 2024 Certified Community Housing Reserve, and $150,320.80 be transferred from FY 2024 Certified Undesignated Fund for this purpose.
Motion made and seconded under Article 26. It votes to appropriate the $500,000 by doing two transfers, $346,679.20 from FY 24, and then $153,000.320 from the Certified Undesignated Fund from 2024 as well, for a total of $500,000 for the purposes of funding the Affordable Housing Trust. Is there any debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote. All those in favor, the motion under Article 26, so signify by saying aye.[847.62][847.62](APPLAUSE). And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 27, see if the town will vote to appropriate $120,000 from the Certified Undesignated Fund Balance to a fund, to fund, excuse me, a grant for the Forward at the Rock Project, and to authorize a select board to enter into a grant agreement, which will include an affordable housing restriction, and to act fully thereon. Mr. Hughes.
I move Article 27 be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that $120,000 be transferred from FY 2024 Certified Undesignated Fund Balance for this purpose.
Motion under Article 27, accept and adopt. The sum is $120,000. It's to be transferred from the FY 24 Certified Undesignated Fund Balance. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor of the motion as read, so signify by saying aye.[903.04][903.04](APPLAUSE). And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 28, see if the town will vote to appropriate $37,015 from the Certified Historic Preservation Reserve to fund the North Howard Gravestone Preservation Project. Mr. Hughes.
I move Article 28 be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that $37,015 be transferred from the FY 2024 Certified Historic Preservation Reserve for this purpose.
Motion under Article 28 is accept and adopt, and the transfer is proposed to come from the FY 2024 Historic Preservation Reserve in the amount in the article, $37,015. Is there any debate?
Hi, Mike.
Oh, Robin, yes.
Hi, Robin Kelly, Cemetery Administrator. I just want to tell you a little bit about this project briefly. The North Howard Cemetery was established alongside the First Baptist Church and stands as the cornerstone of the town's heritage. Along with its earliest and most historic significant markers is the gravestone of Shubal Keely from 1783, a Revolutionary War veteran, which symbolizes both the founding families of North Howard and the military history of this town. This project seeks funding to restore and conserve these historic gravestones that are at risk of irreversible damage due to age, weathering, and instability. Many of these stones commemorate war veterans, early settlers that shaped this town's identity. 16 stones need new foundations. Seven stones have clean breaks. Nine stones are in two pieces or more. Four stones are broken in three places. Two stones are shattered into four or more pieces. And five stones have been damaged with pins that require removal for restoration. In addition, we have 62 monuments that are currently leaning or endangering falling, posing safety risks and potential further breakage. We have six Revolutionary War veterans that are buried in that cemetery. Shubal Keely from 1783, Major William Gage, 1795, Sergeant Zebulon Gage, 1806, Anthony Keely, 1800, Gamma Mail Cahoon, 1834, and Sergeant Job Chase, 1833. So I'm asking that you guys please move forward, and I'd like to thank CPC for their ongoing support and the Historic Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Alan Hall, North Howard. I just want to thank the Town of Howard's Community Preservation Act for funding this. It's very vital to our community up there in North Howard, most alone of my ancestors, and thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Any further debate on the motion under Article 28? Looks like you're ready for a vote. All those in favor, the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.[1081.02][1081.02](APPLAUSE). And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 29, this is one of the articles that I announced last night, and I should have announced at the beginning this evening, that I was not going to read in its entirety. Hopefully, you've had an opportunity to look at the article if you have interest in it. There is a sketch plan there as well. But this is to authorize the board of selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, or remnant domain, acting pursuant to General Laws Chapter 40, Section 8c, and Article 97 of the Amendments to the Massachusetts Constitution, a perpetual conservation restriction in the area described in the article. Mr. Hughes.
I move Article 29 be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that $382,879.83 be transferred from FY 2024 Certified Open Space Reserve Fund, and that $117,120.17 be transferred from FY 2024 Certified Undesignated Fund for this purpose.
So the motion under Article 29 is accept and adopt, and it's to transfer from two separate funds, the FY 24 Certified Open Space Reserve, and then the Certified Undesignated Fund Balance from FY 24. But the total is $500,000, as indicated in the warrant for that transfer. Debate on Article 29? Yes, sir.
John Sarkis. I'd like to just clarify... Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Sarkis, you have to speak right into it. It's...
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I was just curious, and I think this is a great project. I think this is land that needs to be preserved. I'm just curious on what the $500,000 is for. Is that just for the development rights? Or is that for legal fees? What's the $500,000 go to? Does it go to the seller of the property? I'm just curious...
Does somebody want to address that?
Where the money goes or what it's for.
Yeah. Good question, Mr. Sarkis. We'll get you an answer. I see Mike Locke...
Thank you.
...Executive Director of the Howard Conservation Trust Rising. Mr. Locke, the floor is yours.
Thanks so much. Thanks, Mr. Sarkis, for your question. Good evening, town meeting voters. Michael Locke, Harwich Conservation Trust Executive Director. Before I answer the question, I just wanted to thank the Thatcher family, specifically Ray Thatcher Jr. for working with us. We know his dad, Link Thatcher, tree warden at one time in the town, and Bev Thatcher, still with us, sweet as ever, great family in town. We appreciate them working with us and preserving this land. The $500,000 from Community Preservation Act Open Space Funds will purchase a permanent conservation restriction. That conservation restriction will be in the custody of the Town Conservation Commission. That conservation commission, conservation restriction and the funds to acquire it is really helping to leverage another $2 million state grant, which is making this acquisition possible in the Herring River watershed. You all see this property from the Cape Cod Rail Trail and Great Western Road, and we will be planning access to this property over the next few years. Property is subject to a two-year leaseback for continued farming by Ray. So glad to answer any other questions.
Any further debate? Mr. Sarkis, a follow-up question?
Yes, sir. With all due respect, so the money goes to the Thatcher family for the development rights prior to the sale of the property? Or does some of the funds go elsewhere?
Mr. Locke.
To clarify, the purchase and sale agreement is between the Thatcher family, Ray Thatcher Jr. in particular, and Harwich Conservation Trust for 2.52 million. And of that 2.52 million, $500,000 from the town will acquire a permanent conservation restriction. So that $500,000 goes toward the acquisition of the property by Harwich Conservation Trust.
Very good. Thank you. I highly recommend that we vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sarkis. Mr. Hall, did you have a comment?
I may have answered it by looking at the plan here. I was just going to ask, I think this is a good purchase, and thank you for the Thatcher family, but the access, the access for this property in the future, doesn't look like you get any access off of Queen Anne Road, but it looks like off of Main Street. Is that going to be the access for people visiting and walking?
Thanks.
Mr. Locke.
Thanks, Mr. Hall, for the question on access. The trust is also working on the acquisition of an adjacent property that has significant frontage on Main Street or Old Kelly Street, and that's where we plan to have public parking access in the future. That's an area that's just opposite the town's roughly 33-acre land bank acquisition from, called the Old Main Street property.
Further debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote. The motion on this one was $500,000 in community preservation funds by virtue of two transfers from designated fund balance on one, open space, the other, undesigned fund balance. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.[1428.02][1428.02](APPLAUSE). And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 30, see if the town will vote to appropriate $168,000 from the Certified Undesignated Fund Balance to fund the Herring River Boardwalk Project and to act fully thereon. Mr. Hughes.
I move Article 30 be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that $168,000 be transferred from FY 2024 Certified Undesignated Fund Balance for this purpose.
Motion under Article 30 is accept and adopt. The sum is the $168,000 listed in the article, and it's to be transferred from the FY 24 Certified Undesignated Fund Balance. Is there any debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote. All those in favor, the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.[1484.54][1484.54](APPLAUSE). And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 31, see if the town will vote to appropriate $143,000 from the Certified Undesignated Fund Balance to fund the Brooks Park Infield Replacement Project. Mr. Hughes.
I move that Article 31 be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that $143,000 be transferred from FY 2024 Certified Undesignated Fund Balance for this purpose.
The motion under Article 31 is accept and adopt, and the sum is $143,000 to be transferred from 2024 Certified Undesignated Fund Balance. Any debate on the motion under Article 31? Looks like you're ready for a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.[1536.54][1536.54](APPLAUSE). And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 32, see if the town will vote to appropriate $33,000 from the Certified Undesignated Fund Balance to fund the Sand Pond Restoration Project. Mr. Hughes.
I move Article 32 be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that $33,000 be transferred from FY 2024 Certified Undesignated Fund Balance for this purpose.
Motion under Article 32, accept and adopt, and the sum of $33,000 be transferred, as indicated in the article. Is there any debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote. All those in favor, the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.[1581.82][1581.82](APPLAUSE). And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 33, see if the town will vote to appropriate $100,000 from the Certified Undesignated Fund Balance to fund the Veterans Field Shade Project. Mr. Hughes.
I move Article 33 be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that $100,000 be transferred from FY 2024 Certified Undesignated Fund Balance for this purpose.
The motion under Article 33 is accept and adopt. The sum is $100,000 to be transferred from the FY 24 Undesignated Fund Balance. Is there any debate? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Noreen Donnie, who had waters. Just have a question. $100,000 seems like, you know, it could possibly be a higher bound for some kind of a facility by shade. I was wondering if we could get a little more explanation on the cost. Thank you.
Questions as to what the $100,000 is going for? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Eric Beebe, Recreation Director. I'm not a resident of Harwich, so I'm not sure.
So Eric is our Recreation Director. He's not a voter. Any objection to him addressing the meeting? I see none. Eric, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Yeah, so this is a project, $100,000 for a 40-by-40 shade structure. It's not your standard pavilion. It consists of poles and sails that come down in the winter so we can preserve it in the bad winter months. It's a substantial-sized shade structure for the kids, for the camp, summer camp, all other programs, and anybody that wants to use it for picnics and things like that. So it's not just a small, little shade structure. It is something that is substantial. It'll last us a long time, and it'll be great for the kids throughout the year.
Thank you, Eric. Any further debate on the motion under Article 33? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor, the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.[1711.14][1711.14](APPLAUSE). And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. That concludes the community preservation articles. We'll now move to Article 34, a petition article. See if the town will vote to hire a tree warden who will work part-time under Mass. General Laws Chapter 87, shade trees of Massachusetts General Laws. He would regulate shade trees to public places. The warden would have the authority to remove dangerous and dying trees without a hearing, to prune for safety and health, to identify planting sites, and to place new trees. Non-dangerous tree removal would require a public hearing. The position would be an annual appointment. Is there a positive motion?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Setfin.
As the petitioner, I move that this be accepted and adopted. A positive motion?
Okay. Do you have a writing or...
Sorry?
Do you have a writing? We've got one here. I've got one here. Your motion was...
Yes, I do. I do have one.
Your motion was to accept and adopt as printed?
Yes, please.
You have the floor, Mr. Setfin.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Matt Setfin, 50 Lexington Drive.
You've got to speak right into that one. It's tough, Matt.
Thank you. Matt Setfin, 50 Lexington Drive. 65 years ago, I had a summer job working for the Harwich Tree Warden. 65 years ago, I had a summer job working for the Harwich Tree Warden. He maintained that responsibility for about 20 years, and then he passed it on to another fellow, Carley Francis. Now, I was out of town for a bunch, several years, so I've lost track of the, why the town decided to cancel interest in having a tree warden to service the community. It seemed to me that this would be important. The town cuts down trees fairly regularly when it's deemed necessary. However, my observation is it gives no thought to replanting trees. And at some point, there'll be areas of town denuded that would not have the benefit of all the trees provide and the aesthetic and the pleasure they give us as a community. The Cape has a tree warden for every town except three. So we are definitely an outlier, and the question is, how do we benefit by that? And I'd say we do not. I proposed this as a part-time job. I'm sure there's a tree warden that is working elsewhere that can fit in a few hours as necessary and bring any concerns to a board so that they can be discussed before the tree gets cut down. I do know from personal experience that many trees, that several trees in the last year and a half have been cut down, as cutting them down is deemed expeditious, when perhaps it was just a matter of cutting off a dead limb. In any event, I can't find one area in town where a tree's been cut down that it has been replaced. So I thank you for your thoughts about this, and I hope you'll vote for it.
Further debate on the motion under Article 34, which is accept and adopt. Gentlemen in the middle here.
Oh, thank you. Brian Sullivan, excuse me. Brian Sullivan, 14 Deer Run. I'm in support of this article, and I just wanted to mention a personal experience as to why I support this article. I grew up in a town, my hometown was Needham, Mass. And I grew up in that town in the 50s and 60s, in a road called Emerson Road, named after the developer, but it was accessed through a road called Chestnut Street, which was a main road in town. And for about a mile and a half from my road area down to the town, it was just lined with Chestnut Streets and providing on public lands plenty of shade. Now gradually, as Matt just mentioned, trees get removed occasionally here and there, and then suddenly, it's just like in the springtime, all of a sudden you notice that all the leaves are out. You know, where do they come from? Well, this is how public lands and public shade trees disappear, and that's why I'm supportive of this, because last year I drove by my, drove in my town, hadn't been there for years, went down Chestnut Street, all it was was pavement, cement, you know, and lawns. And my own resident, Emerson Road, same thing. All the public shade trees were all gone. Now, Harwich, it's a town rich in natural beauty and coastal charm, is a home to thousands of trees that line its streets, shade its parks, and define its rural character. These trees are more than just landscape elements. They are living infrastructure that improves air quality, prevents erosion, increases property values, and enhances the quality of life for residents and visitors alike. However, without a dedicated professional to oversee their care, this vital asset is at risk. Hiring a tree warden is not just a proactive investment, it's a necessary step in protecting public safety and environmental health. Tree-related hazards such as falling limbs or diseased trees pose real threats to people and property. A tree warden would bring expertise in identifying risks, managing disease, and invasive species. They would also ensure compliance with the state and local regulations, particularly under Mass. General Laws Chapter 87, which governs protection of public shade trees. Now, if you were to go in my yard and look in my shed, you'd see a chainsaw that has gotten plenty of use over the years. So I'm not in, I'm in favor of landowners taking care of their own property how they want to, but regarding the public spaces, I feel that the public shade trees are very important. Plus, as Matt mentioned, the tree warden is going to be proactive in replacing these trees. If someone back in Needham in that day was doing that, this street would still be lined with shade trees where it's absolutely today, you know, barren. A tree warden would serve as a point person of residents with concerns about trees and public land, and could help mediate conflicts or provide guidance for removals and plantings. In an era of increasing storms and climate stress, having someone with the knowledge and authority to make informed decisions is essential. Most towns across Massachusetts already have tree wardens, play vital roles in municipal operations. Harwich deserves the same level of care and oversight. Harwich should not be one of only three communities in the state without a tree warden, and almost, and amongst the few towns in our state without one as well. By hiring a tree warden, the town demonstrates its commitment to public safety and environmental stewardship and the preservation of its unique character, you know, for our public areas for generations to come. $25,000 for a part-time position, I think, is well worth, you know, the upside that this position can help this town maintain its current character. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Just so the voters are clear, there is no money in this motion. This is a motion to accept and adopt the idea of hiring a tree warden, but there is no funding in the article itself. I'll go to Mr. Handler. After I take this gentleman, you were next in the middle.
My name is Michael Rudden. I live in East Harwich. I have a question which may help us make a decision. After 33 articles, of which the Select Board and the Finance Committee totally agreed, we come to Article 34, and they disagreed. Could we have a summary of why the nays were both the Select Board and the Finance Committee? Thank you.
That's a good segue to the gentleman to my right, Mr. Handler.
Here I am.
Chair of the Select Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you for the question. And as I rise here to give a narrative, the interest of my narrative, and I want to be clear, is to not, to not quell the conversation and to not stop the information that you all at the microphones would like to share. I think it's healthy, and I think it's important, and I certainly respect Mr. Sutten's act of bringing this forward. But to answer the question as to why some on the Select Board, if not all, I can't remember the number, were nay vote, this is directly from council. This article constitutes a non-binding directive to the Select Board and the town administrator to hire a part-time tree warden. It is non-binding because the decision whether to hire an additional official is an executive function that rests solely with the chief executive of the town, which is the Select Board. The sole authority of the town meeting is to appropriate sufficient funds to then fund a position. This article does not, however, propose any funding source for this position. Moreover, it is the opinion of council that because the charter does not provide for an elected tree, an elected tree warden, that position is subject to appointment by the Select Board pursuant to General Law Chapter 41, 106, further pursuant to Section 5, 3, 2 of the Town Charter. The DPW is the sole person, or the sole department responsible to take, take directive for what a tree warden would do. So that is at least why I was a nay vote. And again, I hope it doesn't slow down the spirit of the conversation. I think it's good and healthy, and it certainly brings us to a little more of an educational awareness of what's going on with our trees in our town. So I hope that answers the question.
Thank you, Mr. Handler. Yes, Mr. Duncan.
Duncan Berry, West Harwich. I want to thank Matt Sutten for bringing this up. I would probably reiterate everything that Brian had said about the benefits of this kind of a focus. Now, the legalities aside, perhaps this is something, again, for discussion as we go on, that there could be a dedicated, you know, task set up within the DPW for this, precisely this kind of profile, this kind of work. But I also think that it speaks to a rising awareness and consensus that the aesthetic and experiential qualities of living in the town of Harwich are our responsibility. And this is kind of what we heard a little bit last night with the local comprehensive plan. These are things that we're responsible for. This is what we actually pass on, the physical, the natural, the cultural properties of our town. And so I do think this is a great thing to discuss and bring to the fore and perhaps move ahead. And again, thanks to Matt and to Brian.
Mr. Hughes.
Thank you. The question was asked by the Finance Committee, and moved to indefinitely postpone this. Comes down to there's no funding source. This should work its way through the budget during the budget process. Maybe it falls within the Department of Public Works. Could be a subcontract. Who knows? But there is no funding to support this, so I encourage you to follow the process in the year ahead and work with the Select Board and the Finance Committee to get it in the budget.
Ms. Farchett.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Matt, for bringing this to the floor. I think it sets the stage for putting together a much stronger motion for the next town meeting. I think this is, I think this whole motion could be a lot stronger. I think we should have a full-time tree warden. I think it should be defined who that person reports to, and I would love to see it potentially report to the Conservation Commission or the Conservation Administrator rather than DPW, because I think that's an important place for that kind of position. And I would also like to see a tree warden involved in a climate resiliency plan, because trees are great for aesthetics, but they are also great for controlling the heat that we see in the summers. They're also great for controlling greenhouse gases, and I think we can think a lot more comprehensively about what a tree warden would do for this town. And I hope that this comes back with the next town meeting with a much stronger article. And finally, I'd like to point out that you use the pronoun he, and I know a lot of very fine female tree wardens in Massachusetts, so I hope you consider that, too.
Further debate? Mr. Sarkis?
Thank you. I worked for the tree warden as well in the early 1980s. I did, I think, three years with Roger Bailey as my sidekick. He was actually working for the tree warden as well. Our tree warden was Link Thatcher in those days, and he cared for the trees. He cared for the street. He had a desire so that when people came to Harwich, they would enter the streets, and you'd see the trees where the leaves grew together from the both sides of the street. I don't know if it's called a berane or what it's called, but it gave a sense of coming in through the tunnels and entering into Harwich Center. It was quite beautiful. I spent a lot of time planting trees, watering trees. They all died. You don't see them around. Maybe not all of them, but most of them did ultimately not make it. But a lot of, there was a lot of good. We pruned yearly. I don't know if you knew that. I don't know if they prune trees anymore in Harwich, but we pruned every year. These are things that aren't here anymore, but stuff that made Harwich beautiful that's not here anymore. I do have questions, though. $25,000 for a tree warden's good, but what about the rest of the budget? What about Roger and I? They paid us. It was good for me. It was good for my family. It was good for the town. You have to remember, there's going to be a budget behind it. If you vote for this, there's more money behind it. But I think it's well worth it. We should look into it. I think somebody should make a motion to finance this. How would I do that tonight?
I'm sorry, someone should do what?
Make a motion to finance this.
Yeah, that would unfortunately be on the scope of the article.
Okay.
The voters are on notice that this subject would be discussed and voted on one way or the other, but not that funds would be raised. So a motion to appropriate money would be outside the scope.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hall?
Alan Hall, North Harwich. This is an example of one of the failures of the charter. The charter, before the charter, we had elected tree warden. Link Thatcher was the tree warden, and before that Walter Cahoon. And they did a great job in the town of Harwich. When I was an employee of the Harwich School Department, when we renovated several buildings, the elementary school on South Street, Link came over to me and asked, "What trees do you need, Alan?" Countin Francis came in, he and I, we dug the holes, and Countin Francis used to drive around in his truck and water them through the summer months, because we didn't have irrigation in those days. So this is a vital thing for all that...
He had a very noisy pump with that hose, too, I remember.
And sometimes it didn't work. But anyhow, the other subject matter is gypsy moss, along with what Mr. Sarkis said and Matt Sutten. The maintenance in all the trees in the town, that's a vital source to us. We're looking for shade trees, or shade, shade in the backyard here, the Veterans Field. Trees work well for shade. Now, I'm a proponent for this for the towns municipalities. When we get further down about private property rights on trees, I still want my private property rights for trees. I want to see a tree warden come back. This is one subject matter in the charter that I think has failed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Any further debate? Yes, ma'am.
Joyce Burse, Pleasant Lake. I have to reiterate what Alan Hall has just stated. The good old days with Link Thatcher as our tree warden shouldn't be handled as just, oh, he was the tree warden. He took personal pride in what he did, no matter where you were. If you had a question for him, if you could find him, he would come to your aid. If you notice all of the beautiful flowering cherry trees or flowering crab apple in the town, those were from Link, and to this day, there has been nothing added to them. They can't live forever, and we do need shade. So I hope you will vote positively on this small amount of money to have someone care about the shade in Harwich. Thank you.
Further debate? Yes, sir.
My name is Scott McKenzie, Deep Pole Road here in Harwich. And we raised our kids in Franklin, Massachusetts, and while we were raising our kids, we hired a tree warden for the first time. And the tree warden that we hired was the director of the DPW, was a part-time position for him. And God rest his soul, he was very particular about the trees that he liked. He liked pin oaks because they were very easy to care for, and they grow very slowly, and the town wasn't required to break leaves so fast. The trees that they chose, these pin oaks being very slow-growing, would not really appropriate for shade trees or those kinds of things. So I would say that if we're going to hire a tree warden, it should be somebody that has a degree in landscape architecture, and perhaps an arborist at minimum. And it just really should not be somebody, you know, that works here in town necessarily. It should be somebody that's really qualified to do the job. And $25,000 is not going to get it. I'm sorry. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Further debate? Joan McCarty?
I'd like to move this article.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. I'd like to move this article.
You mean move the question?
Thank you.
Terminate debate. Is there a second? There's a motion on the floor to terminate debates, a non-debatable motion, requires a three-fourth majority to pass. All those in favor of terminating debate on Article 34, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's a unanimous vote, and I so declare it, so we'll now move to vote on the motion. Mr. Sutten made a motion under Article 34 to accept and adopt as printed in the warrant. All those in favor, that motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
The motion carries. Article 35. This is a petition article to amend Chapter 125 of the general bylaws by deleting Article 2 and Article 4 completely. And then there's an explanation underneath that tells you what Article 2 and Article 4 are with an explanation. Do we have a positive motion on this article? Mr. Handler.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that Article 35 be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Do I hear a second? Okay, so we have a motion on the floor on Article 35 to accept and adopt the article. Debate. Mr. Birch?
Tom Birch, Queen Anne Road, Harwich, resident since 1980. When I see a problem, I like to educate myself and address it. I believe it's absolutely ludicrous... I believe it's absolutely ludicrous we can't buy a bottle of water in the town of Harwich. And here's a couple of examples. I had a tree crew doing a job for me. I said, "What do you guys want? Soda, coffee, whatever?" "No, we want water." I said, "I'll be back in 20 minutes. I got to drive to Dennis to get a case of water." Crazy. We had a situation with the fire department, a fire on the border, a little contamination got in the lines. The water department corrected it, fixed it, had to flush. We had to supply water for the town residents of North Harwich. Oh, we can't buy water in the town of Harwich. We have to drive to Hyannis with the dump trucks and fill up pellets and come back and hand out water. I just think it's absolutely crazy. Can't go to a Mariners game, get a bottle of water. Can't buy your grandchild a bottle of water. So I'd like to reconsider that and get it off and allow water bottles. The second part of this is the plastic wear and the ban of plastics for takeout. When pandemic hit, these restaurants were struggling. Most of them would have gone out of business if they couldn't have provided the takeout services which they provided. And here along comes this constraint that's going to add 30 to 40 to 50% to their takeout costs. I think we should eliminate that as well, and I hope you guys support it. There's plenty of restaurants here that are going to give you their opinions.
Thank you, Mr. Birch. Further debate? Gentleman in the middle.
Hi, my name is Mike Abdow. Been a commercial fisherman on the Cape for 60 years. My business is in Chatham. I now run a charter boat, because I'm old and I can't do the stuff the young guys could I understand the bill for the water, but when you own a business like I do, you have a lot of people come from different parts of the country, different parts of the world, even different parts of Massachusetts. Ninety-five percent of them carry water, fruit juice, high-energy drinks. Everything is plastic. Chatham has the same rule. They don't like the plastic, but people still show up on my boat. My family, the boss, the wife, goes to BJ's in Hyannis once a week. She buys me a couple of cases of water. Issue is, I don't like glass on the boat. And if it drops, it breaks, somebody gets hurt, cut, then I have to explain to the Coast Guard what happens, write a letter, and the whole nine yards. The packaging, the other part of this bill, you can still go anywhere in this town and Chatham, and you can buy stuff in plastic. You're not going to get away from it. And I, you know, understand it's not good. I go to the dump and my wife makes sure everything goes in its proper place, and she does it all the time, and yells at me if I don't. But the problem is, is I am now shopping out of this town and a lot of other people. We'll go to Dennis, or we'll go to Yarmouth, or we'll go to Hyannis, and they'll buy their stuff there with the plastic. And that's pretty much all I have to say.
Further debate? Yes, ma'am.
All right, may I have to switch? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Heather McGowan, West Harwich. I'm a registered dietitian, and I'm in support of amending the bylaw to delete Articles 2 and 4. This nation is in a health care crisis. A hundred million Americans, about 40% of the population, are classified as obese. Twenty-two million of those are severely obese. Thirty million Americans have diabetes, and sadly, both of those numbers are on the rise. Quoting the CDC, "Most chronic diseases are caused by shortlists of risk factors, one of which is poor nutrition." And here we are, contributing to this problem by eliminating the option to purchase water in reasonable-sized containers. The plastic reduction bylaw is enacted to, and I quote, "protect the health, safety, and welfare of the inhabitants of the town." In my professional and personal opinion, this current ban is by no means contributing to our health or welfare. Instead, it's contributing to the health care crisis. There are times when we don't have our water containers handy but need to grab a quick drink. When the only option is to grab a gallon-sized jug of water or a sugar or chemical-laden beverage, that's not an option, and it's only contributing to unhealthy habits. Last night was actually a perfect example. I forgot my water container and needed water, and no, I am not putting my face in that German-infested water bubbler. So had the current ban been thoroughly thought out with public interest in mind, they may have considered a deposit on water bottles like Maine, or better yet, ban all unhealthy beverages like soda, power beverages, or energy drinks. Public education on the importance of recycling could also have been a more viable solution. And that would have protected the health, safety, and welfare of the residents. As for the food service containers, if you can't find 10 other uses for those containers, let me know. I use them for gardening, leftovers, crafts, just to name a few. The school would use them. This plastic ban would have been better served at the state level instead of creating staggered bans throughout the Commonwealth. So I urge you to support this article to put our health and safety ahead of poorly thought-out proposals. Thank you.
Thank you. Further debate? Yes, sir.
Josh Winston with the SEAL in Harwich Center. Again, would support this as well. I think we've given it a good run to see how, you know, the town reacts to it, but I think it's evidenced by pretty much everybody here tonight that this kind of thing, you know, everybody here is environmentally minded. We all recycle. We all take our trash to the dump. We clean up after ourselves. I think it would be in the best interest of everybody to just allow the residents of Harwich to sip success through plastic straws or paper straws, whatever they choose, but at least to have the choice, because not having a choice totally sucks. Get there. But in reality, I mean, we have to, I agree, having staggered levels of restrictions on some businesses but not others really is hard on everybody. So I would, I would leave it to the good people of town to make those choices for themselves. So, thank you.
Thank you. Further debate? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name's Kim Sesserman. I live on Ryder Road in North Harwich. I'm falling on the other side of this argument. I'd like to point out that on March 21st, 2023, the Mendiru and Monaco Commission Plan, Commission on Plastics and Human Health, in conjunction with Boston College and Woodhull Oceanographic Institute, which authored this study, released a report that presents a comprehensive analysis showing plastics as a hazard at every stage of their lifecycle. The findings said that plastics cause disease, impairment, and premature mortality at every stage of their lifecycle, with the health repercussions disproportionately affecting vulnerable low-income minority communities, particularly children. Toxic chemicals that are added to plastics and routinely detected in people are among effects known to increase the risk of miscarriage, obesity, cardiovascular disease, and cancers. Plastic waste is found everywhere in the global environment, with microplastics occurring throughout the ocean and the marine food chain. Now, think about that. It's coming up the food chain. And Woodhull Institute also did a study in Bedford just last year, I think it was, and they found microplastics in the marshes. So now, it's like probably in Belznek, and it's affecting the clams, and it's affecting the scallops. It's affecting the fish. We're eating it, and you think that that's not a health problem? And also here, all this talk about Harwich Water is AAA, great water. Why can't you get a big jug and fill it up with water? Why can't you use a water bottle with you? When you go to the grocery store, bring your own bags! You know, I saw something on Facebook today, it was like, oh, the paper bags rip! And I, you know, I go down, I have, we have a house also in Yarmouth, and on the street, on Union Ave, plastic bags in the, in the trees. You look down Route 6, there are plastic bags all over the place. So I think it is a health hazard, and I think it's going to be really bad if we don't do something about it.
Further debate, Mr. Otten? Patrick Otten?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Finance Committee, as well as Board of Selectmen. I am Patrick Otten, East Harwich. There are nine towns with, there are nine towns in Cape Cod that have this exact same commercial ban on bottled water less than one gallon. The outer Cape, we have a Provincetown, Wellfleet, Eastham. Lower Cape, we have Orleans, Harwich, Brewster, Chatham, also Yarmouth and Falmouth. There is now a petitioner in Dennis to enact the same rule. While I'm talking, would everybody please take out your cellphones and take a look? Just put in the two words, choose one of your resources, maybe it's New York Times, maybe it's Google Docs, but just take a look at plastics and health, and also take a look at the health care cost due to plastics. Bottled water, you don't know where it came from. There are leach aids coming out of the chemicals used to make the plastics. There are over 50,000 nanoparticles of small plastics in every bottled water, small enough to enter your cells within your body. We all have plastic cell particulates in our brains and our testicles and our ovaries, everywhere. We are full of plastics, because that's exactly what we're drinking. How many of us grew up as children with bottles of water in our hand? None of us. Think about your children today, growing up with this bottled water immediately available. Let's talk about costs. For 16 ounces of water purchased from a store, you can buy 1,000 gallons of Harwich water. That's equivalent, if you wanted to buy 1,000 gallons of bottled water, that would cost you $12,000. It's simply corporations pursuing profits over the needs of our, of the environment and our health. There are four water bottle refill stations in Harwich. There's one at the Chamber of Commerce, there's one at Brooks Park, one at Red River, and there's another one on the bike trail. I hope that this message is clear. Plastics are harmful for our health and our environment. To talk about the second part, I agree that the fourth article in the bylaw should be rewritten. I'd like to submit, I move to amend the main motion to read as follows, to amend Chapter 125, the general bylaws, deleting Article 4, and we can continue discussing this, this article as it stands.
Could you bring that forward? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, so we had a main motion on the floor, which was to accept and adopt the article, which included both Article 2 and Article 4. Mr. Otten has just made a motion to amend the main motion, which has been seconded, and his, his main motion is to have the article, the motion, read as follows. Okay. Do you want to change that? Give us just a moment. So his motion is to amend, accept, and adopt so that we would delete Article 4 but not Article 2. Is that correct?
We want to delete Article 2.
I think you want to keep that.
Right. Go ahead and rescind it.
Right, right. So his main motion is now, which is on the floor, is to delete Article 4 but keep Article So, Mr. Otten, did you want to speak to it at all? I know you made the motion at the end of your comments. You get an opportunity to just address it briefly?
So my intent here is not to, well, I think Article 4, yes, needs to be rescinded, the restaurant takeout. I would like us not to be voting on Article 2 and maintain the current ban on plastic water bottle limits.
Okay. So we're going to deal with the motion to amend. Again, the main motion was that both these sections be deleted, and now his motion is that just Article 4 be deleted. Any debate on the motion to amend?
Hello, I would like to speak on it. First, I'm a-
Your name, please?
My name is Jessie Swain, and I am asking permission to speak. I'm a resident of Harwich, but I just turned 18, so I'm not registered to vote yet.
Excuse me, one second, ma'am.
All right.
She lives in Harwich, but she's not registered to vote. Can, any objection to her addressing us briefly? Okay. Go ahead, ma'am.
I actually was stepping up in order to make this, propose the same amendment of not including the first plastic bottle ban on the motion to remove the ban. I was actually in middle school when this ban was first introduced, and I spoke at the town meeting then, as I think I was an 11-year-old girl. And I have always felt really passionately about this. As a student, I'm involved in, in the environmental movements at my school, and I just really feel that students of my generation and kids my age really do care about our environment. And I was really proud when our town passed this amendment when I was much younger. And I just feel that it would be, I don't know, pretty disappointing if we were to backpedal. It's, I, in my, from my point of view, it's worked quite well in order to just use paper takeout, sorry, not takeout, paper water bottles, like the cardboard ones, as well as the canned water. I work on a sailing charter vessel, and we serve canned water, and it works just as well. It's not really any more expensive in the long run, and it really is quite possible just to bring a metal water bottle with you. Everyone my age does it, and it, you know, works quite well. And I really don't see why we should be going back in time at all in terms of making environmental progress in our town. Thank you.
Thank you. So any, any further debate on Mr. Otten's motion? And his motion is to just delete Roman numeral 4 but to keep Article 2. Any further debate?
I think it's the other way around.
Gentlemen?
Hi, my name's Jeremiah Reardon. I own Red River Barbecue here in town. I'm actually here to speak more on Article 4. I'm here to speak more on Article 4, and the separation of it that Mr. Van Otten just put forward makes sense to me as well, for these reasons. The ban that was put in place for takeout materials, as far as plastic goes, was every type of plastic. There are plastics available to us that are compostable, that we use at the restaurant. We use paper wherever we can. The compostable plastic is 98% corn. It doesn't hold up as well under heat, but we figured out how to use it. So my point is, I, I, I am not a fan of plastic. I don't support plastic, but we can't just quit cold turkey. We have to work together to come up with a middle-of-the-road where businesses can survive and residents still benefit, and then we work forward to eventually getting rid of all of it. But we can't do everything right away. It's too cost prohibitive. That's all I have.
Okay, again, and I want to make sure people are clear, because I apparently was not clear when I just made that last announcement. Mr. Otten's amendment, first of all, this article seeks to delete both 2 and 4. Mr. Otten's amendment is that we just delete 4. Am I correct, Mr. Otten?
Yes, sir. Please delete.
Okay, all right. So that's what we're debating right now. Further debate on that amendment? Yes, Ms. Cibola.
Linda Cibola, 460 Route 28. Thank you, that answered my question, because I wasn't sure if we were deleting, undeleting, or redeleting. or redeleting.
Further debate? Lori, did you want to speak? You've been standing by that microphone?
Yes, Lori Moore, Parallel Street. So, I have a question, we're on the amendment.
Yes, we are.
And we're just saying, let's delete Article 4.
Correct.
Which is just the food service.
Right.
Got it.
Any further debate? Mr. Robinson?
Jonas Robinson, Pleasant Lake. Are we deleting Article 4 from the article? Or are we deleting Article 4 from the bylaws?
We're deleting Article 4 from the bylaws. We're leaving it in the article, because the article's delete both sections. I know, and that's why Ms. Sebula brought that question.
Article 35 wants to remove...
Delete both sections.
Both sections. I am asking to remove only Article 4.
Right, right.
Leave Article 4 in the Article 35.
Right.
Okay? So then...
His motion is actually deleting Article 2, so it remains in the bylaw.
Correct.
Yes.
And we will be acting on the restaurant takeout. That's ultimately, if this passes.
Further debate on the motion to amend only? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Ken Dixon, East Harwich. I believe that the ban of single-plastic food services is already in place. Is that correct?
That's correct. Both of these are in place.
And Article 35 says we're going to delete that.
Right, delete both of those.
So if we take Article 4 off of this, and it's not part of this article to delete, that means they remain banned. Is that the intent?
No, it's not. It's just the opposite, sir. We're taking Article 2 out of the article.
You're taking Article 2 out?
Right.
You said Article 4 several times.
And so 4 remains to be deleted.
Is Article 2 coming off?
That's the motion.
Is it the motion?
Yes, it is.
You can hear that we'd like you to repeat the motion, please.
Okay.
Amendment.
So we have an Article 35 that seeks to delete both 2 and 4 from the bylaw. Mr. Otten's motion is to take Article 2 out of this article, so it does not get deleted. It remains in the bylaw, and only Article 4 would be deleted. That's what the motion to amend is. Further debate on that motion?
Yes, sir.
Ben Warshaw, 8 Lakeway. I am in support of leaving Article 35 as it is. I am no fan of plastics. I have a metal water bottle right here. I fill it up everywhere I can. That's what I do anytime I have the option. We have spotty enforcement of this. I purchased a water bottle, a single-use plastic water bottle, in downtown Harwich yesterday. So it's not really being enforced. Beyond that, I can still buy a soda in a plastic bottle. So I can still buy single-use plastics. It's not really doing anything, other than taking away the healthy beverage option, when I might forget my water bottle at home running out the door and need to get water going somewhere. I don't want to have to go buy soda. You know, yes, there's canned water, yes, there is other containers. I'm fully in support of those, but I think it's up to the residents to, you know, make choices that are good for our environment, for ourselves. I want to use this every time I can, but I shouldn't be told that I don't have an option to purchase a water bottle. And I remember that water issue in North Harwich, when we had to go buy water from elsewhere. That was kind of scary, not to know where we're getting water and needing to send people out of town to get that. So I would like to keep this Article 35 exactly as it is and remove both of these from the bylaws. Thank you.
Further debate on the amendment? Mr. Weiser.
I think I understand that the amendment to the Article 35 would drop the ban on water bottles from Article 35, and then if we choose to do that, we would only be discussing the restaurant takeout containers. And I fully support dropping the part of Article 35 that calls for removing the ban on plastic water bottles. I am carrying my stainless steel water bottle. There are places to refill these things all over town, not enough of them, and hopefully the town administrators of various types will see to it that there are more locations for us to refill our portable water bottles. In the meantime, we're going to drop this from Article 35 and just discuss the restaurant takeout issue. And I hope that you will vote in favor of the amendment, so that we can move on with this discussion and settle this, hopefully, once and for all. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Bonnie Bridges, Deep Hole Road. I would just like to remind people that only 7% to 9% of plastic is recycled. The rest of it is burned or buried. And also, any... When you reuse a plastic bottle, it mixes with the water, and you have plastic, nanoplastics in that bottle that you are drinking. Do not reuse plastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further debate on the amendment? Yes, ma'am.
Evening, Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Harwich Chamber and East Harwich Resident. I think what Patrick was doing, and thank you, I think, Patrick, I'm not sure yet, but the perspective of the restaurants and food establishments was to come tonight and share that they wanted to be part of the discussion in partnership to make sure that both the environment and the businesses would survive together. So I think, Patrick, what you're saying is what this bylaw petition by Mr. Birch was to rescind the current bylaw that was adopted two years ago for the food establishment takeout containers, correct?
Correct, and I support that.
So I'm now going to go back with the other restaurants, and thank you, Mr. Otten, for that. Let's all get together after town meeting to work on a bylaw that will work together. Thank you.
Any further debate on the amendment?
Just to add the note, the Board of Health also supports this action to rewrite the restaurant limitations on plastic use.
Any further debate on the amendment? Okay, I'm going to put it to a vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am.
Abby McGillan, East Harwich. So I actually have been in the service industry for almost 20 years now, and I do agree we need to rescind it. I can't tell you how many times I've tried packing up like a lovely $40 plate that's all saucy, and it just... I mean, it's on the floor before the person gets out the door. But I've been standing up here for a while, so I do want to speak on the plastic water bottle ban, just because there was a lot to talk about it, and I hadn't been able to speak yet. I think we need to get rid of the ban, and there's a few reasons for it. I do understand that there's chemicals, carcinogens. You know what? That's in everything. It is. These kids are using tablets in kindergarten at the school. Those screens are not good for them. Anything that the kids use, you can buy at the store nowadays, everything's poisonous now. Everything has chemicals in it. Water makes up 80% of our body. I cannot tell you how many times... I'm a single mom to a young child. How many times I've left the house to take my daughter to an extracurricular activity in the town, and I forgot her water. So I go to try to stop at a store, and my only options to get my young eight-year-old child is a soda, or a Gatorade, or a juice. My eight-year-old can't drink out of a can. She will cut her lip. She will cut her tongue. Kids are young, you know? And then honestly, for any mom or parent in general, have you ever tried to give your kid water out of a paper straw or a paper thing? They freak out. It tastes funny, it's not water, it's not good, I won't drink it. Get me the juice instead. That's not a healthy alternative either. So if we're going to ban plastic water bottles, why can't we ban plastic Gatorade bottles? Why can't we ban Nips? Why can't we ban, you know, the big plastic vodka jugs? Those are all on the side of the road, too. You know, honestly, nothing's healthy anymore. It really isn't. I just think that having single-use... They say single-use, but they're not. You can refill a water bottle anywhere you go, even with your sink, because honestly, Harwich has great water. We do. People don't buy a bottle of Diet Coke and have a filter at home that they can refill a Diet Coke bottle with more Diet Coke. Doesn't make any sense. So I just want to speak on that.
Thank you. Any... You want to speak to the amendment?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Patrick, you've... Just for clarity, for at least myself and maybe some others, you had mentioned rescinding, and then you had mentioned rewriting. Could you explain... Are you... Is your intention to rescind this year and then rewrite next year? Correct.
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
Further debate? Mr. Houston?
On the amendment?
Yes.
People have spoken about the issue of the drinking water. I wanted to speak briefly on the litter. I spend a lot of time running around town, every neighborhood, on the roads, on the bike trail, and in the last two years, the litter of empty, single-use water bottles has been dramatically changed.
Any further debate just on the amendment? Ms. Moore?
Lori Moore, Parallel Street. On the amendment, I'm listening, I'm going nuts over here. If you know me, you know that. All right, so we have a problem. We can't drink out of the tap water or out of a drinking fountain in a public place. I get it. We can't turn on the hose and fill up gallon containers. I turn on my water and fill my dog's bowl of water in the tap, and it smells like... What's that smell? Chlorine? What is it? Chlorine. It smells like chlorine. Smells like swimming pool, anyway. So, but that's in my water. Yeah, and then... And then we want to rip down acres of trees to put in more septic systems.
Ms. Moore?
So that that's going into the water.
Just, Ms. Moore, try to just address the amendment.
Yeah, thank you, Michael.
All right, thank you. You want to speak to the amendment, ma'am?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I'm real short. Let me pull in.
That's okay.
Mary Ann Copa, East Harwich, Christopher Way. All I'm going to ask is that when we do start voting, that you clarify what we're voting, because I'm, at this point, pretty confused.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Mr. Thompson on the amendment? You got to speak right into that, Alan. We can't hear you.
Alan Johnson, Harwich Water Department. I just want to remind you all, we have some very delicious, clean water that comes out of your faucet. I don't care what you put it in, it's still delicious. And I wouldn't worry about buying water bottles. Get one good one and fill it up and enjoy what you're paying for.
Any further debate on the amendment? I'd like to get the amendment to a vote. Do you have something on further that hasn't been said, sir?
I'll keep it short. Yes, I do. My name's Taylor Powell, live in Harwich, Stone Road, small business owner. Speaking on... Towards the grab-and-go and this container issue, this would essentially put a noose on any business that has a grab-and-go. Anybody here... I don't know anybody here that maybe they would buy a to-go salad if they can't see it. So it's very important to kind of have this still available. It's very costly to have all these restrictions on grab-and-go and to-go items. I'm not here to speak on the water issue. There's ways around that, but there's really no ways to display what someone's buying. You're not going to buy a sandwich if you can't see it. You're not going to buy a salad if you can't see it. It's going to really complicate things for the public, so I don't support it.
All right, so I'm going to attempt to frame this, so you can vote on the amendment. Shall we?
Just one more.
Mr. Hall?
I'd just like to speak on the amendment. I'm in opposition of it for reasons that I feel that I'm a good citizen in the town of Howard, and I can make my own decision. Now, I make... I listen to everybody here with their opinions about how things are good for me and not bad, or bad for me. I was born here, I know what I'm doing every day, I pay my bills. Thank you, but I can make my own decision. I don't need to have... Be banned on everything that we have in this town. And we need to stop this, because we're losing grips on the United States of America. Thank you.
Okay, we'll try it again. So we're on Article 35. Article 35 seeks to delete two sections that currently exist in the bylaw. One is Article 2, that's the single-use plastic water bottles, and the other is Article 4, which is the ban of the single-use plastic food service containers in the restaurants. What Mr. Otten's motion is, is to delete Article 2 from this article, so it will no longer be considered for deletion. It will remain in the bylaw, the single-use plastic, if you vote in favor of his amendment. The motion then will just deal with whether we ban the single-use plastic food service containers in the restaurants. That's what will be left for the meeting to vote on. Understood? Okay. All those in favor of the motion to amend so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no?
No.
I'm going to have to take a standing count. If the tellers are here, would they come forward? We have the same tellers we had last night, so I don't need to swear them in again? Okay, we're voting on the amendment. I'm going to repeat it again before people stand up and vote. We have Article 35. It seeks to delete two sections of the bylaw, Article 2 and Article 4. If you vote in favor of this amendment, you will take Article 2 out of that consideration. It will remain in the bylaw. It will not be considered for deletion. We will then further debate Article 4 and see whether we delete that as well... Whether we delete that at all. All those in favor of the motion to amend, please rise and be counted. Show your voter card. Could have a red card tonight. All those in favor of the amendment, same sections, tellers. Mr. Robinson? 11. Lynn? 11. Mr. Banks? 51? Thank you. Ms. McCarty? 59. All those opposed to the amendment, those in opposition, please rise and show your voter card. Mr. Robinson? 25. 25 for Mr. Robinson. Those of you keeping track? Lynn? 15. Joan? 38. Mr. Banks? 32. Those in favor of the amendment, 132. Those in opposition, 110. The amendment carries. So we now have a main motion on the floor, simply to delete Article 4. That's what we're debating now. Is there any further debate on that motion? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the amended motion to delete Article 4, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no?
No.
Motion carries. It's a general bylaw amendment, so it's a simple majority to pass. Thank you for your patience on that one. Article 36. It's another petition article. I told you at the beginning, I was not reading this in its entirety. Oh, yeah. Excuse me, one second. Oh yeah, excuse me, one second. I just need a two-minute recess. Okay, thank you, we're back on Article 36. And I indicated at the outset, I would not read this one in its entirety. It's a proposed home rule petition to create a fertilizer bylaw. Do we have a positive motion?
We do.
Yes, Mr. McCready?
I move that Article 36 be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Alright, the motion on Article 36 is accept and adopt as printed. And it has been seconded. Any, any debate on that motion to accept and adopt? Mr. Otten?
Once again, thank you. So, this is an ask. Nothing will happen until we ask. The first step in asking is to ask the Select Board, and they have to now then ask the Legislature of the state of Massachusetts to consider this as a home rule petition, enabling Harwich to establish its own fertilizer regulations. This has already passed in Nantucket and Orleans. This means it's already been approved by the Attorney General. It is also supported by both Seer and Luddy. What is the problem? There's a ninety percent decline in our estuaries, sixty percent decline in our ponds, Pleasant Bay currently has red tide, it is one-hundred percent closed to shell fishing. Hinkley's Pond, last December, I think it was Christmas, had a cyanobacteria bloom, very unusual. All of these are caused by excess nutrients in our water. A home rule petition is an ask to reduce the application of fertilizers. Fertilizers contribute fifteen percent of, to the decline of our water quality. Residents are asked to use certified organic fertilizers when growing fruits, growing vegetables, and use in their gardens. Grow a Cape Cod lawn, a pollinator lawn. All commercial agriculture is exempt. This will cost you nothing. It is free. Sewering, however, will cost $2 billion in the next fifty years. If you look at the Water Department's Harwich Water Quality Reports, this is a quote from their report, nitrogen and phosphorus in fertilizers are of greatest concern to our water quality. Lawns need less fertilizer than advertised, there are a multitude of fertilizing alternatives available today. Reducing your fertilizers will also contribute to the TMDL, Total Maximum Daily Loads, the Massachusetts specifications for both fertilizer, for nitrogen and phosphorus. This spring, I received seventeen emails from True Green, promised me, promising me a green lawn, but what they forgot to promise me, that I would also be getting a green pond. So I'm asking for your support to reduce fifteen percent of the contributing source to our water quality decline in reducing our application of fertilizers. Stop trying to make here look like there. Thank you.
Any further debate, Mr. Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Let me start off by saying that there is no more, no- And I don't want to encourage anything by fertilizer either, Patrick. But five years in a row, we've had this discussion, and everybody needs to be clear on this. This is a ban on fertilizer that's disguised as a home rule petition. Because there was a sunset in the state legislation that allowed us to opt-in for local control a number of years ago. We chose not to, don't know why, but we did. If, if we were asking, just bring this back, to have a discussion, an earnest discussion with the Board of Health, about where we want this to rest, I would be all in. Because it would be home rule, and it would be something that we could determine ourselves, what we want to allow and where we want to allow it. But, it contains a ban in the very beginning, and it actually opts for more harmful fertilizers by using organics. So, I urge you to turn this down, that's why the Board took the position it took. It doesn't do what it says, it's not a home rule petition as much as it is a request for the state legislature to allow us to ban fertilizers.
Any further debate on the motion? Yes, sir?
Steve Noes, Woodlily Road. As I read the article, it says that with the exception of the purposes of commercial agriculture, I'm not on the cranberry growers, please, don't, don't take it this way, but they use chemicals, the water they use comes in and out of ponds to fill their cranberry bogs in the wintertime. I don't see anything wrong with that. My problem is, is that why should some residents be banned from doing something that they want to do in the yard? This says I can't use chemicals in my vegetable garden, I have to use organics. This would say that I can't, I can't use chemicals on my ornamental plantings. When gypsy moth was mentioned earlier about a tree warden, you know, is the town gonna be able to spray for gypsy moth, or me to keep my trees? The ban on using these chemicals, I think, is obsessive, and, and actually, it puts me as, discriminating against me to use my own property as I see fit. Responsible people, we have said many times at town meetings, people here are responsible. Responsible people read the directions and do the right thing. You see on ads, when use as directed, if people continue to use chemicals, use as directed, the problem will be minimized without banning everything all over the town. Thank you.
Further debate, Mr. Hall?
Yes, thank you. Alan Hall, North Harwich, resident cranberry grower. I see that Mr. Otten put in there use- I'm not in favor of anybody getting banned. I, I don't think I should be allowed just because of commercial agriculture. I don't think anybody should be banned to not use fertilizer. Everybody should be able to ban it. All we're doing is banning things around here. That doesn't fix things. Education does, okay? I have IPM, I go Integrated Pest Management. I'm very educated on how to grow cranberries, for my own personal use in my family, and we sell them. It's a heritage that's been in this town for a hundred and eighty years, that we're slowly losing, and I'm, it's killing me, because I see everything that's going on because of banning. We're not the type of people that ruin things. If you educate, go to the Conservation Commission, have working sessions, go and learn about the environment, how you can better help the environment. We don't have to just ban. Ban is wrong, okay? I'm, I'm speaking because my sons are gonna be cranberry growers, and we're gonna probably be the last ones in this town. It started with Hall's and the Dennis, and it'll probably end with the Hall's and Harwich. And that's gonna kill a lot of us, personally. But, agriculture, fertilizers, your lawns, number one, you can't afford it, it's expensive. There's a lot of people in the business doing landscaping, they make their money in their living, maintaining people's properties. They're educated, they're all licensed professionals, a lot of them that I know. They have, they go to courses to the Massachusetts Department of Agriculture, and they have this. We don't need to just ban. Education, education, education. That's why we spend billions of dollars in Montemoy, to educate people. Let's do that instead of banning things.
Further debate on the motion? Yes, sir?
Bob McKenzie, Deep Pole Road. And so, I would like to say that the last time this came up, that we had, who was it that sits over here? Leo came up and he said, you know, that he's an expert in this stuff, and that in, in organic fertilizers, and they can be just as poisonous as anything that you get from, you know, Dow or any of these other companies, and so, you know, he, you know, Mr. Otten has a thing for organics, but organics can be just as poisonous as anything that you're gonna get from anywhere else. Thank you.
Mr. Birch, did you want to speak?
Yeah, if I could. I'll switch hats, instead of water bras, I'll go to fertilizers. I'm a landscaper by trade, Bennett, here. I think part of our wastewater program was to educate people. I haven't seen it happen yet, I've been at probably ten or twelve meetings, and, oh yeah, well, there's plenty of professionals who'd like to help, and I think, instead of banning, more bans, and this is a state-controlled thing, the people are licensed, educated, monitored, trained, and we want to share our knowledge to the homeowners and what have you, but I think the town or the Conservation Department needs to address that education thing, and I totally agree with Mr. Hall, it's about education. Thank you.
Further debate, yes, sir?
Mr. Moderator, thank you. Bob Piantadosi, Eighty-Nine Bank Street. I'm kind of conflicted about this. I am so interested in, you know, clean water, clean environment. Mr. Otten has done a ton of work, but it leaves me with some questions, and perhaps, perhaps, Mr. Otten could help me with this. So, nitrogen is one of the things we're all very concerned about. How does it, how does it move, how does it migrate from our lawn to our water sources? So I was looking, we have, I'm in Harwichport, and there's this great construction project. They're excavating for a foundation, there's ten feet of sand, literally, you know, that they've just moved, and I started thinking about, so if I put a pound of nitrogen on my lawn, and there's ten feet of subsoil, sand, soil, and I'm trying to understand how my pound of nitrogen migrates down through ten feet of sand and soil, and how that can possibly, and it perhaps it does, moves to our aquifer. And I started, you know, and literally, and I say a pound, because a pound of nitrogen is basically per thousand square feet, and that's what typically, we, you know, how we measure the product. And so that's a coffee can. Now, it's the old kind of coffee can, which has actually had-
Please speak into the microphone so we can all hear.
A coffee can that actually had, you know, sixteen ounces. So, you take that, one pound, and you distribute it over a thousand square feet, and then that particular product has to migrate through thatch and soil, it's taken up by the plant, some of it's soluble, some of it's water soluble, and I'm still trying to understand that product, that one pound, is going to migrate from my lawn to a water source. Now if it does, you know, please help me, but can Mr. Otten tell me how much of that pound of nitrogen actually moves through that soil?
Well, that assumes Mr. Otten wants to respond, so.
Yeah, because it's-
This isn't an ask questions of people.
Well, it's, but it's, it's important-
You make your presentation, and if he wants to respond, he can.
And I would appreciate it if you would. So the other point, just to follow up on that, because we're, you know, nitrogen is this, you know, is, is the N-word we're using, and I'd say we want to keep our eye on the ball. How we are impacting our environments, which is, is it overregulation? Healthy grass or turf reduces air temperature between seven and fourteen degrees. And that's not my, those, that's from the University of Minnesota. During an active growing season, healthy turf provides about twenty-five square, with twenty-five square feet, provides enough oxygen for one human person. Cool-season grass is trapped, removes pollutants from water as it moves through the soil. So, you know, that, if having an act, a healthy turf actually is an environmental plus. Now, regulating, I have no problem making sure that these fertilizers are stable, and they're not moving through an aquifer, but I think we want to keep in mind that having a healthy lawn, and as a filtering system, cooling the environment, because I know Mr. Otten is concerned about trees, and I am as well, so, on one hand, we're, we're looking at how do we mitigate temperatures and pollutants, and one, then we're also looking at taking away maybe the element that we need to keep these grasses growing and keep them healthy. Thank you.
Further debate on the motion to accept and adopt this article? Looks like we're ready for a vote. Mr. Otten, you, you have an opportunity one more time, you can speak twice.
I think, just to make a couple of points. One, we do live on an aquifer, that's where all of our water comes from, and all that water comes from either rain or snow, so whatever the rain carries, whatever the snow carries, it is transmitted to our aquifer, and that's our drinking water, it's also the water that we're, we live with. Education. Let's think about DDT. Are we still using that? Did everybody have to be educated before they stopped using DDT, or was there a ban on DDT, and then suddenly, everybody woke up and said, oh, you're right, we shouldn't be using that? The word "ban" gets used repeatedly here, endlessly, ban, ban, ban. This is a reduction. It is not a ban. It's hopeful that by limiting fertilizer application to fruits, vegetables, and your garden, that there will be less fertilizers, less pollutants, and less nitrogen, phosphorus, and potassium in our groundwater, affecting our pool, our ponds, and seashore. That's the intent here. Thank you.
Further debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote. The motion on this article is accept and adopt the article as printed. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye!
And those opposed by saying no?
No!
I'm gonna take a standing count. Tellers come forward, please? Get your clickers? Okay, so we're on Article 36. We have a motion to accept and adopt the article as printed. We're gonna have a standing count. You need to stand and hold your red card, so the tellers can see you. All those in favor of that motion to accept and adopt, please rise and be counted. Mr. Robinson? Eight. Lynn? Eight. Mr. Banks? Thirty-four. Joan? Forty-four. Okay, all those in opposition to accept and adopt, in opposition, please rise, hold up your voter card.
Are we gonna miss the game again tomorrow night?
No.
Mr. Robinson? Thirty. Thirty. Lynn?
Sixteen.
Joan?
Forty-one.
Mr. Banks?
Forty-seven.
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 Right, forty-seven. Thank you. Those in favor, their motion 94. Those in opposition, 134. It does not carry. Article 37, another home rule petition, this one on pesticides. Mr. Hughes, do you have a positive motion? Mr. McCready?
Yes. I move that Article 37 be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Motion under Article 37 is accept and adopt as printed. Is there any debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote. No? Mr. Otten is rising. Mr. Otten, you are recognized.
Hi, Patrick Otten again, East Harwich. So let's stand on the seashore, swim in a pond, walk in the woodlands, and wonder. Appreciate the beauty with gratitude. The beauty is the reason why you're here, and keep believing in that beauty. It is our destiny, its destiny is in our hands. Let's talk about pesticides. Again, this is a home rule ask to allow, to ask the state legislature to allow Harwich to make its own decision on the application of pesticides. This is already passed in Orleans, Eastham, Wellfleet, and Saturday it passed in Churro. So it has been approved by the Attorney General. Both Luddy and Seer also support this. This is a home rule ask to reduce the outdoor toxic pesticide use in order to promote a healthy environment. The root of, the root word, side, means to kill. The health risk due to exposure of chemicals sprayed affect yourself, your neighbors, your children, your pets, the bees, the birds, the chipmunks, the squirrels, the snakes, the salamanders, and whatever else is unfortunate enough to cross your yard. Pesticides are now found in our waterways. Stop using rodenticides, which cause secondary poisoning in our wildlife, predators and raptors, snakes, fox, coyotes, owls, hawks, and eagles. For your own personal protection, use repellents and wear proper clothing. Do not call an exterminator to spray your yard. When you spray your yard, why are these yellow signs held up? Everyone has seen these yellow signs. What does it say? Caution, pesticide application, If you go outside of the Board of Health, a handout on preventing mosquito bites is available right here. There's also a handout on preventing ticks. Neither one of these advise you to call an exterminator and spray your yard. They both advocate for personal protection. Put on your repellent, wear the proper clothing. It does not say spray your So let's keep our behaviors aligned with our values and help protect our environment before we all wake up one morning and realize what it is we have lost and we have fallen into a nature shortage. Please support this petition. Thank you.
Any further debate on the motion under Article 37? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Andrea Belford, South Harwich. I might assume that at least two-thirds of us own a dog here in this room. Last year, we lost our sweet dog to lymphoma at age five years old, much too early. There have been several studies that found that dogs who've been exposed to herbicide and pesticide-treated lawns, especially those that include herbicide 2-4-g, were up to 200% more likely to develop cancer, specifically lymphoma. They inhale and ingest these toxic chemicals when they take walks and go home and lick their paws. There are several companies on Cape, Pure Solutions or Natural Lawn, for example, that use organic, eco-friendly, non-toxic lawn care and tick control products that are safer for your pets and your children. We ourselves use them, and they work. So if you're on the fence about this, and you love your dog, and you'd like to walk your dog, who all they want to do is stop and smell the flowers, please consider voting yes on behalf of our beloved four-legged family members. Thank you.
Further debate. Mr. Sarkis?
John Sarkis again.
Hello.
Thank you. The way this is written, it's kind of strange here. It says it allows, on the allowed material list, all non-synthetic natural materials. Hmm. Arsenic's natural, isn't it? Isn't it an element? So we can use arsenic? Is this what this is indicating? Things like that have been banned, but I think this, again, people, if you read the label and things are done properly, there's no need for us to try to regulate further. How are we going to have somebody go check? Do we have a person in town that we're going to sign to go monitor this? Are we going to hire somebody? How are we going to go get that $300 fine if we can't have somebody go out and we don't have somebody to, to do it? Do we have somebody to go out and do the inspections? Is there somebody in town qualified? Or do we hire somebody? I think this is another ridiculous thing. I'm sorry to say. That's my opinion. Vote your conscience.
Mr. Hall?
Alan Hall, North Harwich. I won't repeat what I said on the previous article, but I'm, same words that I said in the last one, I'm going to put on this one. But I do have some other questions. It says the application exceptions, indoor pest sprays and insect baits, insect repellents for personal and household use, pet flea and tick sprays, powders, and pet collars, all inside your home. Where does that odor and drift when you spray that inside your home go? So it's okay to poison yourself inside your home, but you can't poison the outside your home. And then you can address your, your animals, your dogs, your cats, I love them to death, but you put this stuff on, then you go and take a walk on the town's lands. Are other people going to be affected by that? How much notice do we have to know that you put pet flea tick spray on your dog or animal? Thank you.
Any further debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote. The motion before you is that this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant. All those in favor of the motion is read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
All those in favor of the motion to accept and adopt, please rise and hold up your red Mr. Robinson?
Nine.
Lynn? Got a good stride tonight, Mr. Banks. And Joan, 43. Those opposed to the motion, all those in opposition, please rise and Mr. Robinson?
Thirty.
Thirty. Lynn?
Eleven.
Eleven.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-four.
Those in favor, 97. Those in opposition, 112. The motion fails. Now move on to Article 38, Harwich Tree Preservation Bylaw. Again, this is an article that I indicated I would not be reading in its entirety. If you have interest, I hope you had an opportunity to look through it. Do I have a positive motion? Mr. Otten, do you have a positive motion on this? If you want to bring it forward, that'd be great.
I move, I move that this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion on Article 38 has, has been moved. Yeah. The motion's accept and adopt. Fouled by the petition of Mr. Otten. Mr. Otten, I'll recognize you for debate.
Trees. We've already heard quite a bit of input about trees from the tree warden. But trees are the root of all life. They provide us with oxygen, shade, carbon storage, climate resilience, reduce energy, reduce runoff, provide aesthetic and emotional qualities. Trees, one tree is the equivalent of 12 home air conditioner units. Trees are expensive. Try replacing a 12-inch tree. Try replacing a 20-inch diameter tree. Okay? This bylaw, as written, is copied directly, word for word, from Mashpee. It has already been approved by the Attorney General. It is already a bylaw in Mashpee. This tree preservation bylaw is to limit the cutting of trees when building or construction is occurring. Trees greater than six inches in diameter are now defined as protected trees within the setback perimeter of a lot. Every lot has a setback perimeter around it by code. It is those trees that we are worrying about. So trees greater than six inches in diameter within the setback perimeter of a lot are defined as protected trees. If they are cut, you have two options. You either replace by replanting or pay into a tree preservation fund. Let me ask a question and see if anybody knows an answer. What was the first town to restrict the cutting of trees? I'll give you a moment to think. I'll give you a hint. It was 13 years after the pilgrims landed. 1633, the town of Cambridge restricts tree cutting. They implemented, they said, trees cannot be cut within the town boundaries without permission. 1633. Here we are in 2025 with the same question. Oak trees are a key species, supri, supporting a vast array of life, including 400 species of insects, moths, butterflies, caterpillars, which are all vital food sources for our birds. We heard a moment ago about gypsy moth. Those are critically important to our environment, to the birds that eat them. Harwich is zoned rural. Let's keep it rural. Let's stop trying to make here look like there. I'm asking for your support on this tree preservation bylaw to limit the clear cutting of trees when building or when construction is occurring. If you have a tree in your lot, it's damaged, it's a danger, you can cut it. If you're not building or constructing on your lot, you can do whatever want, you want. You can clearcut your lot to your heart's desire. This is only when construction or building is occurring that the perimeter of the lot and the trees there are protected. Again, let's allow Harwich to care for that which we are all here for, our woodlands. Let me ask a question. If the clear cutting that we see happening right now, what are we going to think 100 years from now when we look back at those, those areas? Are we going to designate those clear-cut areas as historic districts or as catastrophic districts? Thank you for your support on this petition.
I have the right to speak. Mr. Hughes?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Mr. Otten. Just so you know, the Finance Committee, we tend to look more at finances than anything else. It leads, it leads us to some practical observations. When Mr. Otten came before us, we asked him, because he cites Mashpee a lot, as far as what this says. First of all, we are not Mashpee. Last I checked, we're in the town of Harwich, and we are Harwich. We asked him what the fees for this would be. He didn't have them with him, but he gave us a list of them the following days from what I assume is in Mashpee. If you do this, a typical tree is going to end up costing you, call it a penalty, of up to $3,000. Think of that. $3,000 to cut something down your lot. We also talked about when you and I now go to solar, whether it's on your roof or ground base, and you put that solar system in, you're relying on your provider to give you an economic analysis that says you're going to produce so much energy during this month, that month, whatever, which means a return on investment. Many times, installations are put in for solar, the homeowner, a couple months later, goes back to the installer and says, hey, wait a minute, the numbers aren't working. I'm not producing as much energy. What's the problem? 99 times out of 100, it's a tree, or several trees, that are blocking the sun, based on the angles of the sun, the time of the year, from providing energy to those panels. What are you going to do? You're going to lose your $20,000 investment? You're going to spend another $6,000 or $12,000 cutting down trees? You're going to cut those trees down, but it's going to ruin your financial analysis. And if you know it ahead of time, it's going to, it's going to change the fact that you want solar or don't want solar. You can't afford it. We talk a lot about affordable housing, and the topic of ADUs, accessory dwelling units, continue to be put in front of us and for consideration. Let me tell you, if you try and sneak one of these things onto your lot, you're going to be cutting down some trees. Now, when you evaluate how you're providing housing for mom or dad, your kids, or even low income for a renter, it's going to impact the financial analysis of doing that and whether you do it or not. So we advocate, particularly from a financial point of view, to turn this article down. Thank you.
Further debate, Mr. Hall?
Yes, thank you. There's a lot of subject matter here, and I don't even have the time to explain it all. However, I'll try to sum it up. We don't, the, there's no provisions in here for agriculture. There's no provisions for insurance companies telling you need to move your tree from your house. There's no provisions on many things. But the number one thing is, who's going to maintain, who's going to manage this? I guess the planning department, the town planner. But this is just another take of people's property rights without compensation. Okay? And I, I'm totally against that. And we're going too much in that direction of just take, 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 ban, ban, ban. There's that word again. All right? The founders of the country, they worked well together, and they worked in education, and they tried to find what worked in, in a balance. There's a balance here. We need to find that common denominator and a balance. There's other things I was going to say. I'm sorry. The trees, there's more trees on Cape Cod than there ever has been. Most of us probably go to Cape Cod Five and get that beautiful calendar. And I love history. And if you look at
look at their photographs, every single photograph is in the bare grounds through the hills of Truro, Eastham, Harwich. All you see is fields and bogs and ponds, open space. These are weeds. That's what my grandfather used to say, that these pine trees and these pin oaks are weeds. They're no good. Now, do I agree with that? No, they have a place. It's a balance. However, here we go again. Let's educate the folks. Nobody wants to destruct their homes or their property. This is geared towards development. Let's be truthful. This is against a person that wants to develop a piece of property and take that risk. You know how hard it is to get permits in this town to go build a house? I built two. And when I built my first house in 1999, and my second one in 2016, which I'm very thankful, but it was a bear, and it was expensive. And that's all this is, is expense. It's not necessary. Thank you.
Further debate on the motion under Article thirty-eight. Yes, sir?
Ben Warshaw, Lake Way Lane. I also think this seems kind of unnecessary. As it was explained, this is only in effect during construction. That's not really what the text of this says. It says it applies to trees removed within the past twelve months prior to an application for building activity are also subject, it sounds like, to this. And if it's only really applying during construction, doesn't that just mean once your project is done and the permits closed, you can go cut the tree down in two months anyway? It doesn't really seem like this is that useful.
Any further debate on the motion under Article thirty-eight? Mr. Sarkis.
Thank you, sir. John Sarkis. A couple of questions. I was wondering on the standards for measuring trees. How did you... I'm sorry. When it comes to measuring trees, are these the standards from the USDA or ANSI? Or how did you determine six inches at a certain height? Where did that number come from?
Mr. Otten.
So tree measurements are all done by breast height, and that's the standard technique for measuring.
From where now?
I don't have a reference for the line item of where it's stated, but it's the common practice to measure tree diameters at standard breast height. You'll see it in the article.
I don't have the documents in front of me, but I would beg to differ with that. I suggest you look up the, it's called the ANSI, American Nursery Standards Handbook. And you may find they measure trees differently. So, again, there's another flaw here. I don't see that that's a... Six inches is like an arbitrary number somewhere, came from somewhere, breast height. Fines and penalties? Gee, there's, again, money. Fines and penalties. Our town is not based on that. This is Harwich. Fines and penalties. Again, this is all new to me. I've been here a long time, but this banning things and having fines and penalties living on us is all new. This other thing that worried me was, if I do want to build an auxiliary apartment at my home, and I have quite a large lot, I've abandoned six acres of cranberry bogs, but now it's full of trees. Do I get a credit if I decide to cut some other trees on my property? You should at least give me that. It doesn't, it looks like it's going to make me hire an arborist. I'm going to have to hire an engineer to draw a plan about my trees and around the perimeter. I'm not going to be able to afford to do anything in town except put my property up for sale and move. This is a bad idea for everybody that owns a tree on their property.
Mr. Birch.
Quite obviously, with the name of Birch, I love trees, but I think this is another ban of banning our rights. I look up here, and everyone up there voted to postpone this indefinitely. I value your opinion, and I think the rest of us should do the same thing and end this thing.
Any further debate on the motion under Article thirty-eight to accept and adopt the proposed bylaw? Looks like you're ready for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, as reds, will signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. Motion does not carry. Article thirty-nine. Non-binding resolution. Resolved that the town meeting endorsed the proposed action by the Historical District Historic Commission to annually present an historic preservation award, a commemorative plaque, to a town property owner, contractor, architect, or other professional whose efforts exemplify a tangible commitment to historic preservation of an historic structure. The criterion selection of the awarding process to be decided by the commission. This award will publicly acknowledge the extraordinary effort and creativeness involved in the retention and use rather than the demolition of an historic town property. Estimated cost, zero. Do you have a positive motion?
I do, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Hughes.
I move Article thirty-nine be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
The motion on Article thirty-nine is to accept and adopt as printed. Mr. Doan, Paul Doan.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. Paul Doan, Harwich Center. And I'm the answer to the Harwich trivia question of who was the town moderator before Michael Ford?
Mr. Doan was that moderator?
I rise, and I'll be quick in the lateness of the hour. But I have the privilege of serving on the Historical Commission. And we are constantly encountering individuals who are seeking to demolish a structure of over one hundred years of age in order to build some new structure. Now, I've grown up as an advocate of historic housing. As a matter of fact, my mother wrote the book on Cape Cod houses. I've lived here eighty-three, well, it's my eighty-third year now, and I've seen a lot of change. You know, years ago, when I was a small fry, there were these canopied trees that lined Main Street, Victorian houses were plentiful, many on Main Street and Harwich Center. This isn't the Civil War I'm talking about. I'm talking about in my lifetime. And we had numerous examples of seventeenth, eighteenth, and nineteenth-century houses. Now I see, in my position on the commission, people coming to us, seeking our approval to demolish the house and replace it with a new structure. Now, those buildings were built to withstand the test of time, but they weren't built to withstand our current housing requirements and lifestyle. I understand that. But my problem is that oftentimes, with a little ingenuity, a little creativity, oftentimes, more costly, I admit. But nevertheless, there are ways in which the present life can be adapted, or the building can be adapted to accommodate today's lifestyle without having to resort to the destruction of the building. And with it, the understanding and appreciation for the generations that were here before us and who created the environment and the charm. You know, one thing I note is that rarely do any houses that have been built in the last few years capture the name, "Oh, it's charming." The charming is a term that goes to structures built in the seventeenth, the Victorian period, the Queen Anne period, you name it, the Cape Cod house period, even the Greek revival period, that we have had plenty of examples of here in the town. So with this article, what I'm asking the town to do is to simply endorse an effort by the Historical Commission to create an annual award, which would consist of probably a commemorative plaque, attractive plaque, hopefully, that the landowner would place on their structure, and a certificate that acknowledges the effort that those people have gone through, the creativity, the commitment they've made to maintain that house. And if it is only successful in accomplishing to save one or two of the existing dwellings in our community, I'll consider the imposition of this award program a success, because we're losing too many examples of our rich heritage here, and it's time to see if there's a different route to travel. So I ask for your support for this article tonight. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Any further debate? Mr. Berry, Duncan Berry.
Yes, good evening, Duncan Berry, West Harwich. I just want to support my friend Paul Doan's application here for this particular award with the proviso that this outlandish cost imposition be reconsidered. Zero dollars. I mean, can we afford this?
Any further debate on the motion to accept and adopt? Mr. Hall.
Yes, thank you very much. I think this is a great article. However, I'd like to make an addition to this, if it's possible, to include cranberry bogs. This town is losing...
I think that's beyond the scope of the article.
Well, it's a structure, in my opinion, and it's a vista...
That's your opinion, but I...
That's why I'm talking, I'm trying to debate that with everybody. I think it's very valuable to this town. We talk about the heritage of these homes and historical preservation. A lot of those homes were cranberry growers. They were sea captains, and they had bogs. You know I'm an advocate for cranberry bogs, so that's all I'm trying to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Further debate on the motion to accept and adopt as printed. Looks like you're ready for a vote. All those in favor, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. It's a unanimous vote, and I so declare it. I'm going to step back on Article forty. Mr. Richard Houston has volunteered at my request to step in as a substitute moderator. All those in favor of allowing Mr. Houston to moderate Article forty, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. Mr. Houston, it's all yours.
Town Council will do it.
And we get, Amy, could you speak to him just quickly?
Good evening. Article forty. To see if the town will vote to rescind authority it granted the Select Board for any actions regarding Article Two of the 2022 Annual Town Meeting in relation to Assessors' Map Ten, Parcel G Two, located at sixty-two Route Twenty-eight, and to act fully thereon. Do we have a positive motion?
Yes. May I come up there to speak?
Mr. Urbano, take it.
I wanted to make sure it's the same. Yep, I'm going to change it.
Okay.
Okay. I move that the article be accepted and adopted as an advisory article only.
And that's the written version?
That's the written version.
Can I take it?
Yes.
So, to repeat it, just to make sure everyone's clear, the motion now reads that the article be accepted and adopted as an advisory article only. Mr. Urbano, do you want to speak first?
Yes, thank you. First, I could never say it as well as Mr. Doan did in terms of preserving our historic buildings. It's really part of the culture of our town. It's as important as the bogs. It is important as the school is important as our businesses.
Sorry to interrupt, Mr. Urbano.
Yes.
I forgot to seek a second.
Oh.
Do we have a second here?
And this article dealt with the Baptist church on Route Twenty-eight, and it's been a year. There's been a lot of issues going back and forth. I commend all the work that's gone into this. And as of last week, it appears that this article becomes truly insignificant in that the board has asked that the historic designation be placed on that building, the historic restriction that was requested in an amendment that specifically equated to a state statute. And now that's part of it. So now it is up to the developer to determine whether they accept it or not. It doesn't mean that was being worked on without the historic designation. It was bad. I think that those negotiating that agreement did their best. They wanted to preserve the building, only tear it down first and then rebuild it to something similar. It's not quite what was voted. And that's what really got me interested in writing this and thinking about it. The notion of why do we vote here at town meeting? This particular article that I'm asking you to vote on is advisory. It means we advise that you do this. The other votes that I thought we took were we expect that what we vote on is done. So I'm sorry, the fertilizer ban is not going to happen. No one else can come in and say, "Yes, we're going to have a fertilizer ban." And I want to make sure that that's how our votes are acted upon in any situation. I know that our board does try. I've heard them many times speak of what was set at town meeting and is it being done. But in this case, it did fail that test until the very end. And so I'm here just to say, please, support the historic nature of our buildings, yes. But more than that, support the authenticity of that vote that we take here to mean that any vote taken on this floor is not advisory unless so stated, that each vote is an obligation to fulfill it, and if not, to come back to town meeting and say it couldn't be done, but this is what we can do, and we ask you to revote. So with that, I thank you.
Any additional debate? Mr. Berry.
Yes, good evening, Duncan Berry, West Harwich. You know, we're here tonight largely because of what happened at that congregation two hundred and fifty years ago. And this Barnstable County was a Tory county, and Harwich was the flashpoint. And the Baptist church in Harwich was the lightning rod that sent four hundred and fifty Harwich men across New England and down the coast to fight for our freedoms. And what we do tonight in town hall, and what we do in every one of these town halls, is because of what was done there, what was enacted there by those people. And whether we like it or not, we're all inheritors, the good and the bad of that. And the good of that is that we all can air and ventilate our issues in places and in topics like this. And the threat that we have is that sometimes we get caught up in looking at the minute hand and not considering the hour hand, or the larger passages in time over the months and years and decades and centuries. And this is one of these elements that's so important to us, and so important to me, that I think it's part of what our DNA is all about, even though it's just a piece of wood and glass and nails. It's a symbol of what we're doing. So I was thrilled when Davenport stepped up. They're an exceptionally fine company. I thought their intentions were fantastic. But somehow, we've gotten tripped up in a situation where the purpose of the preservation of this building and the purpose of the preservation of this district got, you know, snarled up. And I think we can unwind it. I think for advisory purposes and for discussion that we've seen tonight, that these are topics that are vital and viable. Preservation and our kind of cultural heritage is on a parallel... heritage is on a parallel path with what we have as our natural preservation and natural environment. So I would, I applaud the Select Board for their work last week, and I just want to reiterate that this is not like an inconsequential vote about an old building. This is a symbol of our liberties on the individual level and our structure of government. So it's a very important thing that we save, and I would, you know, hope that we all keep that in mind tonight as we move ahead. Thank you.
Additional debate? Sherri Armstrong?
Hi, Sherri Armstrong, South Harwich. I apologize. It's probably the late hour, but I was just wondering if somebody could clarify for me what this change to the amendment does by making it advisory only.
Anyone want to volunteer to speak on that one?
No, it's just, Amy Questle, Town Council. It's, it's non-binding, so you are sending, essentially just sending a message.
Any additional debate?
Sally Urbano from West Harwich. I just had a couple of questions. I thought we could go into the details, because it was about the historic preservation restriction that was initially granted on this church, and then it got lost. And then, as I understand it now, if I could ask the questions to someone on the Board of Selectmen, I understand they created a historic preservation restriction. They sent that restriction to Davenport. Davenport now has the chance to either, yes, I'll follow that restriction, or no, I won't follow that restriction. If he says yes, then it goes to the Mass, chooses its Historical Commission, where they will look it over and decide, yes, this can be a legal document. Is that, is that about the correct way of it all?
Anyone from the Board of, the Select Board want to comment on that? Don't rush me all at once.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sherri, what this really does, again, to Ms. Urbano, we're on a track to legally hem this in. We did send something in. It's not finished yet, it's not completed yet, but as you've heard before, what we're doing here, by the amendment, the change for the motion, is to send a message that the sense of the town supports where we're headed, that that's why we put the restriction document out, and as we talk about this, I would like to think that Davenport would consider the action at town meeting, that we're in solidarity with the Select Board's action, and that we really want a conclusion that aligns with the last action we took at town meeting.
A more question, please. Who actually owns the building at this time?
That's, that was the whole point of the original transaction. The church still owns the church. We entered into the picture because it could not be developed. There were unknown owners, like for instance, the cemetery. We were going to be able to perfect the title for the entirety of the property and then convey it with the restrictions that we were going to impose upon it. Somewhere along the line, it just got off-center. But again, the action we took, we took the letter. It says in the agreement that we have to have a mutually agreed upon historic restriction. The document we sent him was our belief about where the conclusion should be. It has to be mutual in order for the title to be conveyed from the church to the town to Mr. Davenport. So, again, this, voting for this, it creates a sense of the town meeting that that's exactly where we want to go, that it cannot end by demolishing the building and leaving a hole in the ground.
Okay, then one more question, please. So if Davenport decides that he doesn't want to do this, comes back to the town and that historic restriction is, would have to go with a new RFP?
We'd have to start over, but I mean, the reality is, from listening to people, and I can't commit to anything because I don't own the building, the town doesn't own the building.
Right.
But the reality is that there are other people that have had conversations about doing precisely what was called for originally, to save the exterior of the building with a historic preservation restriction, and to create housing inside of it in order to house people, which was a noble endeavor when we first started, but somehow we got off-center in the negotiations. But we're trying to correct that right now. Whether it ends up with Mr. Davenport or somebody else, the intention was still there to try to complete a transaction that saves the outside of the building historically and allows for housing to be built inside of it.
Okay, and so to the townspeople, please, I hope you do vote a yes to, to help give some credibility to the fact that we initially voted this and one of the historic restrictions put on the building, and we still want the same thing. Thank you.
Any additional debate? Ms. Sebula?
Thank you. This is just a question of if the developer, the Davenport Company, rejects this restriction, this designation, what then happens and does the town then have any liability to reimburse them for any of the expenses they've already encumbered and paid for, you know, in surveys and design and all that foolishness? And how can we then get out of the signed purchase and sale agreement? So I'd just like to know the exposure that the town has on that, getting out of that purchase and sale agreement if necessary.
Mr. Howell again.
Ms. Sebula's comment, we're in a negotiation. It calls for this, to be able to have the property conveyed. We're not at that point yet. And there has been no claim made against us by Davenport Companies to suggest that there's going to be a lawsuit. It's way premature to talk about this. Right now, all we're looking for in this motion is a sense of the town meeting that we could do two things at once, which was the preserving of the exterior of the building and to create an opportunity for housing in that area. Should we get to that point, we have counsel, but we're not at that point. No one has made a claim against us, and there is no litigation. So it's, it's difficult. That's an if question that has no real relevance at the moment.
Any additional debate? To quote someone else, "It looks like you're ready for a vote." I'm going to read it one more time because it's different than what the, was in the warrant. So it's, the motion is that the article be accepted and adopted as an advisory article only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm going to recommend that we restore the previous moderator very quickly. Any opposition? Mr. Ford?
Thanks so much, Mr. Houston, for filling in there. Article 41. See if the town will vote to amend the vote of 2024 Annual Town Meeting under Article 19 to rescind the borrowing in the amount of $750,000 in accordance with Section 20 of Chapter 44 of the Mass General Laws and to act fully thereon. Mr. Hughes?
I move that Article 41 be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Motion under Article 41 is accept and adopt as printed. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor, the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It passes by the simple majority needed. Article 42. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds for the Pleasant Lake Avenue Water Tank Paint Project and to act fully thereon. Mr. Hughes?
I move that Article 42 be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that $600,000 be transferred from water retained earnings for this purpose.
Motion under Article 42 is accept and adopt. The sum is $600,000 to be transferred from water retained earnings for this purpose. Is there any debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote. All those in favor, the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 43. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to obtain engineering services needed to fund work related to identifying sites for treated wastewater effluent recharge, including all costs incidental and related thereto. Mr. Hughes?
I move that Article 43 be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that $150,000 be transferred from Wastewater Special Purpose Stabilization Fund for this purpose.
Motion has been made in second under 43. To accept and adopt, the sum is $150,000 it's proposed to be transferred from the Wastewater Special Purpose Stabilization Fund. Is there any debate?
Mr. Ford?
Mr. Hall?
Yes, I'd just like to know, where's the affluent water coming from? Chatham, a new location, Dennis Wastewater Plant?
Anybody want to answer, where is the affluent coming from? Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. If need be, I would ask to rely upon Mark Drainville from GHT Engineering. However, my attempt would be that this is the town taking back the water that was treated for us by Chatham, so it's our affluent treated water coming back from Chatham in this instance.
So, it would make sense to have a location somewhere near the Chatham Line. Why do we need to spend $150,000 to figure out it needs to be as close to Chatham?
As it says in the explanation in the warrant, we're now looking at the different, we're now preparing for more affluent treated water to come back. This is an act that's required under the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan. We're starting with the East Harwich treated water. You've heard that we now have a project on Queen Anne and any other projects in the future. So that's tying into our next step, if you will, outside of construction, and that's taking back and distributing the treated water. So it's for the entire sewer system of the town in the future.
I understand, but it's getting treated in Chatham, and then we're going to send it back to Howard somewhere to put it back on our ground and let it go into the aquifer because it's treated water. I'm just saying, common sense, you would look closest to the Chatham plant. You wouldn't want to put this out in North Howard, pump it from Chatham to North Howard. So I'm just trying to say, it should be closer towards the Chatham Line. I just don't know what parcels of land are available in that area.
So there are at least three parcels that are under consideration. However, the consideration includes tests and other items that require the funding. So we will most likely end up in the area that you're describing, and not the area that you and I live closer to, where there is no sewer. However, the intent of this article is to begin that process, and more importantly, get the funding from that special fund.
Okay, thank you, sir. But it sounds like you've got three locations already identified, so I don't know what the $150,000 needs to do. I think we got three places, let's go talk to the owners or the town, whoever owns the land. I just don't understand that.
So the reference to the parcels is internal only to the town. It's not to the engineer, it's not to the consultant, and outside of the town. That's the purpose of this article.
Okay, well, just interested.
Any further debate on the motion under Article 43? Mr. Powers?
Just to state that presently, the Special Purpose Stabilization Fund for Wastewater has a balance of $1,774,088.52, and that is before this article. Thank you.
Further debate? Mr. Thompson, did you have something?
Yes. I just want to remind everybody that anything returned close to Chatham, you'll be pumping into our drinking water. We have a lot of well fields in that area, so that not the further away was better. Just so you're aware.
Any further debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote. All those in favor, the motion is read under Article 43, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote and I so declare it. Article 44. See if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from the Special Purpose Stabilization Fund for Affordable Housing to the Howard Affordable Housing Trust Fund or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Hughes?
I move that Article 44 be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that the sum of $1.5 million be transferred from the Affordable Housing Special Purpose Stabilization Fund for this purpose.
Motion made in second under 44 to accept and adopt, the sum is $1,500,000 and is proposed to be transferred from the Affordable Housing Special Purpose Stabilization Fund for this purpose. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor, the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote and I so declare it. Is Mr. Kroll here? William Kroll?
William Kroll.
Ah. I'm stepping back on Article 45. Mr. Kroll has offered to moderate the article. All those in favor of allowing Mr. Kroll to moderate Article 45, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? I hear none. Bill, you're all set. Good evening. Article 45. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to provide for the option of electronic voting at town meetings or take any other action related thereto. Is there a positive motion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that Article 45 be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that the sum of $35,000 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
It's been moved, seconded, that Article 45 be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that the sum of $35,000 be transferred from free cash for this purpose. Mr. Ford?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, last year, some of you may recall, we had an article similar to this in the warrant. We didn't have any money in it at that point. And the vote of the meeting was to ask the moderator and the town clerk to look into it further, and then report back to the town meeting what our recommendations and findings were. And so, we kind of divvied up the work. The town clerk spoke with other clerks in towns where there is electronic voting, specifically in the towns of Chatham and in New Orleans, both who have electronic voting, and got a handle on some of the finances, leasing the clickers or purchasing the clickers, and coming back with that information, and we presented it to the Select Board and the Finance Committee. In addition to that, I spoke with the moderators in the towns in which electronic voting is used. In fact, I have the pleasure of serving as Town Council in New Orleans, where they've used electronic voting for over five years now. And in speaking with those moderators, and in my own observations of it, it appears to me that there are definitely benefits. You've all seen the number of standing counts we've had to take at this meeting, and the time that that takes. That is obviated by obviously these electronic voting. It is expensive. The sum of money for $35,000 would probably get us through the first annual town meeting to use them. The proposal would be to rent them, makes more sense than buying, particularly as the technology is constantly changing. But it simply gives this article the option of using the electronic voting to the moderator. Doesn't require it on every article. There are many articles, frankly, procedural articles, in which a quick call can be made by the moderator orally, and you don't need to use the clickers. And so, moderator simply has to use good judgment. I've seen that happen in New Orleans, and that mix of using it when necessary on large votes saves a lot of time and is convenient. There are those that would suggest that electronic voting is kind of counterintuitive to an open town meeting. The old New England Town Meeting is where we all hear, we assemble, we get up, people hear what we have to say, and then we all vote very transparently. There are some people who like the electronic voting for the privacy aspect of it. That wasn't the purpose in which I raised this initially. I raised it for efficiency and for the town to kind of keep up with the advancements of civilization that I think frankly are inevitable, and to make the meetings more efficient. So, this is our, the clerk and I, since she can add anything that, or answer questions regarding the financial part of it. Our recommendation was to bring it back, have you people decide, is this something you want the moderator to have as an option in order to run town meeting? And the choice is up to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. You only had 30 seconds left, so you- You only had thirty seconds left, so you did well. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Stephen Tribblestone. I am a resident of East Harwich. I speak in favor of the electronic voting. I've also, just out of curiosity, gone to New Orleans just to see how their system works, and I have to say that, yeah, it really does, from the sake of privacy, it does take the awkwardness away from, you know, someone says, I'm going to vote this way, and they look to your neighbor and they go, yeah, you should vote this way. I don't advocate lying to your friends and family, but certainly, your vote, I personally believe that people's vote is not only theirs but their own, and I think, you know, granted last night, I kind of felt like there's a little bit of tension going on. I think that people should be able to vote how they want. And last year, there was a gentleman who spoke from, I believe he was a business owner, and spoke that, you know, again, that contention of privacy is that, you know, I don't, but he runs a store, if he votes away that perhaps someone isn't so keen on, that that could potentially affect their business. Again, I see it from the end of privacy, but also, yes, I think that, you know, rather than having people sprint up and down to do the vote tally, I think that would also be more efficient as well. I do have one question, though. I wasn't clear, was the proposal to lease or to purchase? I wasn't clear on that.
It's to lease.
To lease, okay. And that is the way we're going, or is this to lease to see how it works out and then go from there? So this would be like a trial, so to speak? Okay. In that case, I would still support it, and I hope everybody votes favorably on it, and thank you. And I'd like to thank the town administrator and the town clerk as well. I know she's heard a lot of me crowing about it and saying, hey, I just came from New Orleans. So thank you both, and thank everyone for hearing me out.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Jay Skoronek, South Harwich. I am in favor of the electronic voting system for three reasons. First is accuracy. We see how there's a lot of recounting, everything like that. Imagine yourselves walking into this room, and you guys each get an electronic clicker. You sit down, the votes happen once, they're tallied, and we know exactly what the vote is the first time, so there's no recounts. The second is anonymity, which is what this gentleman talked about earlier. I think it's really important that we have the privacy to vote the way we truly feel, how we should vote, without influence. I think it's, sometimes you hear, again, comments and snippets about people, you know, how they're judging how you vote. I think that providing that comfort to people would be a benefit to this meeting. And thirdly, it's also time management. So imagine if this took one night, and imagine we didn't have to come again tonight, we could be home with our dog, our kids, watching Netflix, anything. So I think time management is a very, very important thing for us. It's cooler tonight. Imagine if it was hotter, like it was, I think it was last year. We had Mr. Ford, I don't want to, you know, bring this up again, but, you know, it was hot, everyone was getting really hot, it was a late night. So imagine if we could get out of here in a reasonable amount of time. I think the cost is actually very minimal, thirty-five thousand. We've been talking about a lot of things that cost millions, so for thirty-five thousand dollars, I think it's absolutely the way to go. We should try it. Chatham already has this in place, it's had it in place for many years. Mashpee is about to adopt this, is what I was told, so I hope you guys vote for this. I, you know, I really hope that this passes tonight, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Moderator. Kroll, just want to say that I agree with this also, for all the reasons that the other gentlemen have spoken about. Privacy, number one. We're dealing with a lot of money here, and being around the town, we're all friendly, we're all neighborly, but sometimes people get in an awkward position because they may see you voted that way. So I'm all for the privacy. I think we'll get better results, it'll be more efficient, you'll get the true results. Maybe we have been getting true results, but I'd just like to confirm that with the electronic vote, that everybody has privacy. Thank you.
Is there any further debate?
Yes, Sherri Armstrong, South Harwich. I have a question. I'd like to know what would be the cost savings of doing something like this, other than time? As a longtime resident of Harwich and a town meeting attender, I don't think that we are going to save time because we seem to be very fond of spirited debate, which I also think allows many of us to know how people are voting by what they say here on town meeting floor. And though I don't always agree, I'm always respectful of people who, how they vote and what vote they make, and I really like the situation that we have, and thirty-five thousand dollars might be a small amount compared to everything else that we've spent, but thirty-five thousand dollars over the next five years for something like this comes to a substantial amount of money. So I'd just like to know what the cost savings are for this. Are there any, or is it just simply the time factor? I appreciate it. I've used electronic voting in meetings that have upwards of two thousand people voting, but we're a small group here, and other than the anonymity that some of you speak of as being a positive factor, I don't particularly go either way on that. Just curious. Just seems like money that we're spending that we might not need to.
Do you want to answer the question?
Yeah, I'm not sure I have an answer to the previous speaker's question about cost savings. That wasn't something we looked at. This is really all about efficiency and making the town meeting experience perhaps one which is more efficient and more people might participate if there wasn't as many standing counts. One thing, I will tell you that the town clerk and I noticed when we look back in the records of the last five years in Harwich, there really were not that many standing counts. In fact, I think there would probably have been more standing counts at this meeting than there has been at any meeting that we saw in the last five years. Am I correct on that, Emily? So, you don't know? When I was first elected moderator, we had a bylaw in the books that required every time we borrowed money, it was a secret ballot. And we had a couple of cans that we'd put in front of the podiums, vote yes can, vote no can, and it took a long time. So every time we borrowed money, it was twenty to thirty minutes. And the meetings lasted five to six nights. Now, we've improved dramatically from that, but there is no reason why we shouldn't try and improve the experience and the time factor again, if technology is out there that would assist us.
Thank you. Further debate? Mr. McGowan.
Yes, Mark McGowan, West Harwich. I just needed clarification, excuse me, I needed clarification. Is the thirty-five thousand a one-time shot, or is that an annual cost, or?
Emily Mitchell, town clerk.
Good evening. So when Moderator Ford and I were reviewing cost models, there are the purchase model and then the rental model, lease model. I think, as Moderator Ford mentioned, the lease would be sort of the initial option to test out how this works in the town of Harwich, and that would not be a one-time cost. So there's kind of a breakdown I have handy, I'm happy to share with folks, but I can give a quick overview if you'd like.
That'd be great.
Two primary vendors provide this service for communities like ours municipal town meeting voting. The purchase model for both is very comparable, approximately thirty-one thousand dollars. That would be a one-time upfront purchase cost. There would be additional costs for essentially the vendor to come onsite and program the clickers and run the clickers and record the counts for the meeting. Both vendors estimated approximately eight thousand dollars to run the clickers for a two-night town meeting. So it's a multifaceted cost process. So thirty-one thousand would be the purchase model. If we were looking at a lease model, it's a per-clicker cost, so it would vary a bit based on the number of clickers we anticipated for a given meeting. We used eight hundred as our base model, and the standard rental cost was about ten dollars per clicker, so eight thousand dollars to rent plus roughly eight thousand dollars to staff two nights.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further debate? Mr. Thompson.
I have to say, I guess there is a time when you change. I was just sitting here thinking back to the days of John Payne in Exchange Hall, when we used to witness town meeting and the events that took place during voting and questioning the voting, is it right, is it wrong? And we've seen that over the years and many other times. So I suppose, as we move forward, it sure does eliminate so many of those recounts, but it does take a lot of character out of the meeting, you know? You come, you hear it out, you punch a button. You're all done, you punch a button, and you go home. There was a lot of flavor over the years, and I kind of think that Alan Hunt would be up in arms to think we're changing the form. But again, modern days, it's understandable, and maybe you get the town meeting over in a couple nights instead. Thank you.
Alan, we would still look forward to anything you have to say at town meeting. And Alan Hunt is the other trivia question, who was the moderator before Paul Don?
Any further debate?
Oh, I was just going to say, can I make a motion to move the article? Thank you.
If there's no opposition to that, why don't we just go to a vote on the main motion? There's no further debate than I can see, so let's bring the matter to a vote. This is not on the motion to move the question. It's on the main motion to accept and adopt the article and appropriate the sum of thirty-five thousand dollars for the electronic vote counters. All those in favor, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
It is a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Kroll. Article forty-six. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to pay unpaid bills from prior years as provided for in Chapter forty-four, Section sixty-four. Mr. Hughes.
I move Article forty-six be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant and that the sum of one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-one cents be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
Motion under Article forty-six is to accept and adopt, the sum is one thousand, two hundred and fifty, ninety-one, and it's to pay the bills that are listed in the warrant. Any debate? Motion to pay unpaid bills requires a four-fifths majority to pass. All those in favor, the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article forty-seven. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to supplement the Massachusetts Cultural Council annual allocation for community grant awards to artists, performers, interpretive scientists, who bring events and programs to local venues which enhance the cultural experience of Harwich citizens of all ages. Mr. Hughes.
I move Article forty-seven be accepted and adopted and that four thousand dollars be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
It's a move and second under Article forty-seven to accept and adopt, the sum is four thousand dollars, it's proposed to be transferred from free cash. Is there any debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote. All those in favor, the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article forty-eight. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds a sum of money to help to free the expenses of the Chase Library and the Howardport Library set funds to be expended under the direction of the Chase Library and the Howardport Library trustee and to act fully thereon. Mr. Hughes.
I move Article forty-eight be accepted and adopted and that twenty thousand dollars be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
Motion's been made and seconded under Article forty-eight. It's accept and adopt. The sum is twenty thousand dollars, and it's proposed to be transferred from free cash. All those in favor, the motion is read, excuse me, anybody have a question first? Got ahead of myself there, no? All those in favor of the motion under Article forty-eight, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article forty-nine. See if the town, see if the town will vote to adopt the provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five-oh, effective fiscal year 2026, allowing the town to enter into Affordable Housing Property Tax Exemption Program. Mr. Hughes.
I move Article forty-nine be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Motion under Article forty-nine is accept and adopt as printed in the warrant, and we have the pleasure of some Monomoy High School students here this evening who are involved, apparently, in a civics class, and this is their civics class, this article. And would you like to address it?
I would.
First of all, are either of you voters?
Uh, no, Mr. Moderator. My name's Christina Wiseman from Eighteen Rainbow Way. I ask permission for Charlotte Skinner from Monomoy High School to be able to speak.
Okay, Charlotte is the student who's going to speak to us on this. Any objection? Hearing none. Charlotte, go ahead.
Hi, my counterpart's not here, but I'm eleventh grader at Monomoy Regional High School, and I'm very grateful to have this opportunity to speak on the behalf of my USS Three Two class. My history class has been, oh, my history, my history class has been, has a civics project that requires us to research issues in our community. Our class decided that the biggest issue in our community and school was the housing crisis. This issue directly impacts locals such as friends, families, and students. We discovered through talking to community experts that sixty percent of housing is made up of short-term rentals or seasonal homes. As part of our project, we decided to support Article forty-nine because it targets short-term rental owners and allows housing supplies for year-round residents to increase. It incentivizes homeowners to rent out long-term, long-term for tax exemptions. Although this applies only thirty units, it does not make up for all potential profit Airbnb's can get. We feel that passing this article will add affordable housing supply as some owners chose to take advantage of it. Also, we made a survey for our peers to take, and thirty-two point four percent of students taking this survey said that their family's living situation felt unstable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So our motion under Article forty-nine is accept and adopt. There is no money in it. This is something that's taken care of through the assessing department. Any further debate? Yes, ma'am.
Hello there, my name is Annie Haven, Mellow Lane in Harwich. First of all, I think this is very creative, and I love that the high schoolers are looking at this issue. I am wondering, louder, yep, okay, how, what are the income qualifiers? How would someone, how would someone's renter qualify for this? What would be the dollar amount that you'd be looking at? For example, like a single person, a family, two-parent income, et cetera?
I don't know if anybody from the assessing department is here to speak to this.
Hello, Carly Jones, assessing director. So this is an income and asset-based program that will go in line with the senior exemption. I don't have the exact numbers off the top of my head, but they're available on the website. And the exemption, it will be based off of square footage, so you get a tax credit of a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars based on how much square footage is the year-round rental.
Okay, and could you please be specific about the website?
If you go to the assessing department, Town of Harwich, it lists all of our exemptions, and this goes in line with the senior exemption for the income and asset base.
Okay, this is a silly question, but a senior exemption meaning that someone has to be of a certain age?
Yes, so the guidelines go along with, the senior, this is not an age-based thing. The senior exemption sets the income and asset basis based off of the cost of living. So we're just following that same guideline.
And that's the definition?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any further debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote. The motion on Article forty-nine is accept and adopt. All those in favor, the motion, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Motion carries. Article fifty. This is one that I indicated on the first evening I would not read in its entirety. It involves further property tax exemptions pursuant to the HERO Act. It involves further property tax exemptions pursuant to the HERO Act. Mr. Hughes.
I move that this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
It's been moved and seconded that Article 50 be accepted and adopted as printed. Is there any debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's a unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 51. See if the town will vote to reaffirm and extend Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 56. Upon acceptance of this section, the town, the Board of Assessors, may grant real and personal property tax abatements up to 100% of the total tax assessed to members of the Massachusetts National Guard and to reservists on active duty in foreign countries for the fiscal year they performed the services subject to eligibility criteria to be established by the Board of Assessors. The authority to grant the abatements under this section shall expire after two years of acceptance unless a vote of the town. Mr. Hughes.
I move that this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
It's been moved and seconded that Article 51 be accepted, adopted, as printed. Any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's a unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 52. I indicated I would not read this one in its entirety. This is the Safe Roots to School article, in which we'll authorize the Select Board to acquire property interests by eminent domain, gift, or purchase necessary to extend the sidewalk to comply with the Safe Schools... Roots to School Project involving Main Street, Sisson Road, and South Street. Mr. Hughes.
I move to accept and adopt this article as printed in the warrant, and the sum of $200,000 be transferred from available, Chapter 90, funds for this purpose.
Motion's been made under Article 52. It's accept and adopt, and $200,000 be transferred from available funds, Chapter 90 funds, for this purpose. Is there debate on the article? Looks like you're ready for a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's a unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 53. See if the town will vote to amend the Town of Howard's general bylaws, Chapter 8 of the Town Code, as set forth below. This involves revolving funds that have been established. Mr. Hughes.
I move that this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Looks like a strikeout of the Gulf Infrastructure Fund. The motion is accept and adopt under 53. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's a unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 54. See if the town will vote to set spending limits for various revolving funds that have been authorized pursuant to Section 8.2 of the Town Code, and to act fully thereon. Do I have a positive motion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Motion's been made under Article 54 to accept and adopt as printed. Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In relation to this article, statute requires that at town meeting the balances be provided or that a report of the revolving funds be provided through you, Mr. Moderator. That is the purpose at this moment. For the Wetlands revolving account, the ending balance... Or, excuse me, the nine-month balance as of last week was $32,013.20. The recreation was $119,169.49. The council on aging is $17,627.45. So let me say that it is a dollar amount. Golf Pro Shop and Restaurant, $378,876.66. Community Center, $116,692.87. The Alborough House... Uh, excuse me. The Alborough House, $51,808.36. The sidewalk funds, $69,958.54. Tax Title Collection Fund, $6,359.46. The Sisson Road Municipal Building, $168,835.24. And the cemetery, $18,710.16. And that would be the report of the revolving funds year-to-date. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Any further debate on the motion to accept and adopt as printed? Looks like you're ready for a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's a unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 55. See if the town will vote to amend the Town of Howard's general bylaws, Chapter 131 of the Town Code, as set forth below, with a strike-through text to be deleted and bold underlined text to be inserted.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
We have a motion to accept and adopt Article 55 as printed. Debate? Yes, sir.
Hi, John August, West Harwich. I am opposed to this extension. By way of background, I am a business owner. I own the Turn-In in West Harwich. Bought it five years ago. I'm a huge history buff. I've had the privilege of living overseas for seven years of my life, and in some very old and historic cities in Europe. And when they preserve things, they actually preserve them, rather than allow them to deteriorate and sink into the ground. And five years ago, I bought the inn in West Harwich. It's over 200 years old. We've put a couple million dollars into restoring it, so I think that's my bona fides of supporting historic preservation. But also, in those five years, nothing has been done to improve the church, which we talked about previously. Bishop's Terrace is sinking into the ground and is a very nice home for raccoons. You know, the Irish pub is headed that way. And quite frankly, we already have a year. If we can't get something done in a year, what is 18 months going to change? I think we need to get our act together and actually preserve these buildings, actually develop plans, and move forward with them, and not just keep delaying and delaying and delaying. Route 28 in West Harwich is an eyesore right now. Those buildings were historic. They're derelicts right now. We need to start moving forward, and I don't think another six months is going to help on that. Thank you.
Further debate on the motion under Article 55? Mr. Berry.
So I would like to, first of all, nominate the new owner of the Turn-In for the first preservation award mentioned by Mr. Doan. I would... I commend you, and I really appreciate what you're doing with that, and I, you know, my hat's off to you. But we do part ways on this matter, and the reality is, is that you talk about having spent seven years in Europe, and I did my allocation there, too. They also have about 1,000 or two more years of cultural knowledge built into their system, and we're at the beginning of a learning curve. And so my belief is that we have to educate people. We're at the beginning of this educational process. And these buildings that you call derelicts, you know, I would disagree that they're just... You could go and say, if you watch any YouTube videos on, let's say, barn finds in automotive history, that people will take a quote-unquote "derelict" Ferrari and turn it into a museum piece. There is no, you know, there is no limit on what you can do to restore and preserve and care for. And I think that's essentially what the contour and the context and the value of what we have as a town is anchored in the very things that you learned in Europe and that we all drive by every day. So the extension of 12 months to 18 months may be symbolic, but it also is a pause. It's not in... It's not in... If you read the language, it says "of, up to." It's not an automatic 18 months. And so I think it would be one of these things that the Historic District Historical Commission would be looking at for higher-value, rarer buildings to, you know, emphasize that this cannot be replaced. So I would encourage you to think of this as a way for us to be able to broaden the base of understanding about the value of these historic buildings. Thank you.
Further debate? Mr. Sutphen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I too... I've spent seven years in Italy and France, and I appreciate what's old, and I do recognize that most things happen in their time. And there's no way we should condemn, say, any old building that's falling down, because there is somebody in the wings that sees the beauty in it. I will tell you, I had a paper route here in 1957 in Harwich Port, and I had 32 papers, and 12 of those houses and buildings are gone. It's a significant percentage. It shows you that things change. And it does show you that people are not inclined to preserve... Not enough people are inclined to preserve. But those that are, are out there. They may need a little time to show up... Show up on the beat and do what's necessary. So the only other thing I would add is, December 23rd, 2023, I went to a historical board meeting. On the agenda that night, coincidentally, were the two houses that I spent my first 25 years in, both to be torn down. So I won't bollocks up the works by suggesting an amendment to make it a two-year demolition delay, but that's where my heart...
Unfortunately, I couldn't take that. That would be beyond the scope.
Well, that's in my heart, but I'm not asking for it. Thank you.
Yes, gentleman in the middle.
Hi, Brian Sullivan from Dear Run. Regarding the demolition delays that have been... We've had in the past, I'm interested in knowing as far as on the delays the Historic Commission has required, after that delayed period, how many of these homes or buildings ever got not demolished? Ever... That we ever found someone to take them over and restore them? Because I don't think there's been many, and I can't think of anything in the five... In the six years I've been in the town that ever actually got restored after the demolition whole period.
Is there anyone from the commission that wants to speak to that?
Can I have the question one more time, please?
The question was, of the buildings over the last five, 10 years that were... Had a delay imposed of a year, which is what it is now, how many were actually saved and as a result of that demolition delay being imposed?
I mean, delays that were put in place, we don't... I don't really have those stats tonight. We did have a couple people come back to us asking to redesign and so we can lift it. That has happened, but I don't have those exact numbers.
Mr. Doan, also on the Historic Commission.
Yeah, Paul Doan, Howard Center. I'm a member of the Historical Commission, as I mentioned earlier. Two points, I think. One is, the gentleman that spoke earlier, I think he's a little misguided in terms of what the purpose of this is intended to accomplish. This distinguished body just voted unanimously in favor of preserving older buildings and doing anything we can to accomplish that, if possible, through the kind consideration and efforts of the homeowner or the structured owner. We can't do anything with a building that the owner owns and is simply letting go into a state of disrepair. So the units that you talked about, the Chase House, the Irish pub, Caleb Chase would turn over in his grave if he knew it was the Irish pub right now. But the Irish pub, the Bishop's Terrace, the Historical Commission has nothing to do with those unless somebody of an owner comes before us and wishes to, A, demolish it or take some action to preserve it. So to throw those out is just to alarm people into thinking that this is directed in an area that it's clearly not directed. I mentioned the importance of... And the amount of people that come before us seeking demolition. We don't have any power to keep someone from demolishing a building that they want to demolish. We can hear them, we can try to suggest things, we can impose a 12-month delay. In most cases, a 12-month delay is largely ineffective because it takes 12 months to get the necessary permits and so forth for somebody who wants to tear down the building and put up another structure. 18 months is an attempt to give the Historical Commission one small arrow in its quiver. We have no arrows. We can throw some spitballs or fire BBs at a battleship and have absolutely no effect by saying, "Start for 12 months, let's see if we can talk this out and come..." Now to say, "Have we had any effect?" No, because we haven't been able to impose a delay long enough to really cause people to think about an alternative. 18 months may do that. In the communities on the Cape that have done so, have gone from 12 to 18 months, have found that in several cases now, they are seeing that people are actually taking action to consider and move toward the renovation or rehabilitation of the structure rather than the demolition. Now, does the increase from 12 to 18 guarantee? No. But at least it kind of puts us in a little bit of a stronger bargaining area. I can't urge strongly enough for this to occur. If it doesn't prove any more effective, well, so be it. But I'm convinced, based upon the evidence that I've learned from talking with colleagues in other Cape communities that are at 18 months, that it is proven to be effective. And it's not going to accomplish anything pro or con to the property owner who doesn't want to do anything with their building and just allows it to fall into a state of disrepair. So I urge this distinguished body tonight to favorably endorse this meager request by the Historical Commission to give us one little piece of capability to negotiate with a prospective applicant on at least a relatively level playing ground. Thank you very much.
Any further debate? Yes, in the middle here, and then I'll go there.
Yeah, Barbara Nickerson, Route 28, Harwich Port. Actually, my husband and I are one of the ones that took one of the houses that was being slated for demolition, and we moved it. So people do things like that. Couple of things about this, I really hope people vote for this demolition delay because, well, for me, 18 months would have been a whole lot easier than 12 months in getting the house moved. But, you know, we seem to be losing the texture and character of Harwich the more and more that the houses keep getting torn down. You know, everybody comes here thinking the Cape's such a wonderful place, it's charming. It's cute. It's got all these cute little houses, and, oh, look, the sea captain was here, and we have the cranberry bogs over there. And then all of a sudden, it's like, when you buy a piece of property, you all of a sudden, they don't want the cute little, you know, 1,200-square-foot, two-bedroom, one-bath cottage on there anymore. They need their 3,500-square-foot McMansion that they have in Wellesley. So, you know, it's beneficial for everybody if we can send it to 18 months. Maybe the owner would think about using it for something else, using it as a guest house or redoing... Restoring the house itself. But it also provides an incentive for the owner to consider maybe using it or letting somebody else end up with it versus just them. So, thank you.
I've got another Doan to call on. Bob Doan, longtime member of the Historic Commission, but no relation to the prior speaker.
Yes, there is a relationship, but it's very far back. Yeah, Bob Doan in Harwich, a member of the Historic Commission. And we do have two examples coming right off mine, just the one just mentioned, the Nickerson House in South Howard. We did impose the one-year delay, and it did... It was effective in pursuing the... Having the building moved, so that was a success story. An additional one, we had one down in the campgrounds, Ocean Grove, a couple of years ago, that we did impose a delay, and they decided just to remodel what they had, and it turned out beautifully. it turned out beautifully. So, there are examples where this does work, but as previously stated, the 12 months is just enough to get your permits, and 18 months will make, I think, bring people to the table so we can discuss it. And we have worked so much with a lot of owners, we haven't put the demolition delay on very many, because we usually come to some agreement that satisfies all parties. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doane. Yes, you're next.
Mr. Moderator, only for the sake, we have about three minutes left before 10:30 with two articles left. I don't want to call the question or call the article to stop anybody from speaking, but are you going to allow us to finish the last two articles this evening?
I have every intention of finishing this town meeting tonight, sir.
Tonight, then I'll just...
Hopefully, 150 people will stay with me. Mr. McManus.
Hello? There we are. Very quickly, actually, the house that the Nickersons moved recently, it was actually in its second period of a demolition delay. The owners of Back Office Associates, early on, had put in a demolition delay for both that house and the house next to it, which used to be where Pam Black ran her ceramics business. But they got granted the delay. They were going to tear the houses down to put in housing, dormitory housing for people they were bringing into their business to train. But in the process, they got a better offer, and they sold the business, and that became not the plan. So, the properties were sold, and in the case of the house that the Nickersons had moved, and I thank them for doing that, the house next door, which is that marvelous East Lake house with the, now has a nice hedge in front of it, that was bought by a person who did a magnificent job of restoring it and fixing it up. To use the two properties in West Harwich on 28 as a reason to say the demolition delay process is a failure is, I think, a misstatement, because in the one case, Bishop's Terrace, as I understand it, the owner basically has no interest in it, and he has no interest in even putting in the engine energy to put it up for sale. It just sits there, and we, there's nothing we can do about that. And the Irish pub, they tried to, as the old folks running the pub sort of ran out of gas, and there were new owners came in and just didn't have the financial wherewithal to get it going, and it sits there waiting for somebody else who can purpose it new.
Thank you, Mr. McManus. Any further debate? Lynn Zalikas.
Lynn Zalikas, Harwich Center. People in this town have an extreme historic value around them that they may not be aware of. By putting in a demolition delay extension, it gives people a chance, time to actually do some research on their homes, or find out what they have. For example, we have at least 10 buildings that were owned by Revolutionary War soldiers that are still in use. There are a couple that are going down very quickly, Bishop's Terrace is one of them. But as people learn more about their homes, they may want some additional help. They may feel like there's nothing out there that can help them actually fix up those homes, improve those homes. So, it is also up to us to try to educate those people. Just wanted to pass that along as a positive to having a demolition delay extension, because it gives us more time to do that.
Thank you. Any further debate? Are we ready for a vote?
One final detail for a prior question about saved buildings.
Sure, Mr. Berry.
Back when I served on the Historical Commission in the late 80s, early 90s, there were two buildings at Lower County and Riverside, both of which were pre-1800, one a bow, a bow cape, and the other one a straight cape, both of which are existing now because we imposed a 12-month demolition delay on them. The other consideration is, for the lack of resources, any building that is either recommended for or gets placed on the National Register of Historic Places, and there are probably about 40 that are known right now in Harwich, you automatically qualify for certain tax credits and for grants for, to help purchase material and labor for preservation.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Mr. Doane.
Yeah, just one final point, very quickly. I don't think there's any finer example of what a demolition delay period can accomplish than what's been accomplished with the West Harwich Baptist Church. We established a 12-month delay in that building, or up to 12-month delay on that building, and because the demolition delay was in effect, the developer was not able to tear down the building as he had planned to do. And the selectmen have acted expeditiously and to accomplish a very successful step forward in preserving that structure. None of that would have occurred, and the building would be down by today if we hadn't been able to impose. So, I think having that capability and having extended it as much as is reasonable is very effective, and I again ask for your approval on this particular article. Thank you.
Looks like we're ready for a vote on Article 55. The motion is to accept and adopt as printed. All those in favor of the motion as read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. The motion carries. Article 56. This is zoning bylaw amendment involving accessory dwelling units. My understanding is, this is not going forward, but being sent back to the planning board. Do you have a motion?
I do, Mr. Moderator. Thank you. I move to positively recommend the bylaw, but due to additional revisions at this time, the planning board is requesting that Article 56 be indefinitely postponed.
Mr. Berry.
Yes, chairman of, planning, planning board chairman, we voted unanimously to defer this positively to the next town meeting. Thank you.
Any further debate on the motion to send it back to the planning board? Yes, sir.
Ken Dixon from East Harwich, speaking for myself and not any board or committee that I might represent. I want to really respect and thank the planning committee and the select board for pulling this amendment tonight. It's not ready. As written, potentially, it's going to let every ADU, accessory dwelling unit that we've created for workplace housing here in Harwich, to be turned into an Airbnb tomorrow. That was not our intent two years ago when we passed it. You might remember me, I stood up here and I argued passionately that we could have some way to have a small solution to our workplace housing issue, and that was through the accessory dwelling units. I'm proud to report that our accessory dwelling unit building permits have increased since we passed that, and every one of those ADUs, that's their acronym, has at least a six-month required minimum rental period. So, it cannot be an Airbnb, cannot be a VRBO. That was the commitment that I argued for, that the select board presented to us two years ago. I don't want to see what comes back next year changing that. I don't think it will. But again, I want to respect the decision of the planning committee and the select board, and thank you very much.
Any further debate on the motion to refer Article 56 back to the planning board? Looks like you're ready for a vote? All those in favor of the motion as read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. At this time, moderator makes the following appointments. Finance Committee, Michelle Galucci, reappointed to a three-year term. Bob McCready, reappointed to a three-year term. Cape Cod Regional Technical High School Committee, Bob Furtado, reappointed to a three-year term. Caleb Chase Trust Fund, Robert Doane, reappointed to a three-year term. And now, Article 57, the herring fisheries. Hopefully, Mr. Houston is still here to join us in that capacity. But do you have a motion, Mr. Hughes?
I do, Mr. Moderator. I move Article 57 to be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrants.
The motion under 57 is accept and adopt as printed. Mr. Houston, what's the state of the herring?
One of the things I've enjoyed the last couple of nights is that, I think, more so than usual, we've had references over the last two days to some of the characters and past leaders of the community. And a nice way to end this is, of course, to remind ourselves of one of those people, Marge Marion, who, for so many years, would help bring the meeting to an end with this traditional article about one of our main resources. So, to dot all my i's and cross all my t's, I went over to the Johnson Flume today, to the fish ladder, to get the up-to-date electronic count.
I knew you'd have them.
212,968 as of 3 o'clock this afternoon. There were many in the ladder, so. The herring fishery is strong, and thank you all for protecting democracy and freedom over the last two nights. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Houston. Sounds like the state of the fishery is very strong. All those in favor of the motion as read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Quickly, before I take a motion to adjourn, I want to thank the members of the Finance Committee for all of their work through the year and through town meeting. Please give them a round of applause. I appreciate that.
[applause]
And now, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moderator, I'd like to entertain a motion to reconsider Article 35 as amended, included, including Article Number Two of the original article.
I'm sorry, but let me, let me just sort this out for a second. Okay, Article 35 was the plastics, and this gentleman rises to reconsider, a motion to reconsider, which has now been made, but I, do I hear a second?
Second.
And seconded, before I took the motion to adjourn. So, it's in order, it's debatable, because, and it is in order, because it's on the same night that Article 35 was dealt with, and you have to take reconsideration the same night. It requires a three-fourth majority to reconsider the action taken under that article. Mr. Hall, I recognize you on your motion to reconsider.
Thank you. Do you want me to read it?
Go ahead, put it in formally.
Article Number 35, as amended on the previous vote, however, include Article Two of the original article.
No, first, you just have to bring a motion for reconsideration. If reconsideration passes, then you can put a new motion on the floor. If it doesn't, the prior action stays.
Sorry. I'd like to put a motion to reconsider Article 35.
Okay. So, there is a motion on the floor to reconsider the action taken under Article 35 this evening. Any debate? Mr. Hall, are there some new circumstances or something that's happened since 35?
I just think we should also include Article Two of allowing the bottles back, bottled water.
Any further debate? Mr. Sarkis.
Yes, sir. Thank you for recognizing me. I agree with Mr. Hall that we should also reconsider our ban on bottled water. Gentleman that talked about having a fishing boat, people come from all over the country to go out on his boat, he can't hand them a Yeti. They don't know if that's been sterilized. They can't bring their own Yeti, they're traveling from all over. They should be able to buy bottled water in town in a plastic so that they can distribute it to the guests that come, and I rest my case.
Any further debate? Mr. Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I beg of you to not do this. This is bad faith. I get that it's a parliamentary move, you can do that, but if you start getting into this, everybody at every meeting is going to wait out until people start leaving, and it's, it's just not right. If you want to do this, do it the right way, bring it back to the next town meeting, and have a flat-out vote on it where everybody's on notice that it's an actual article in front of them in sequence.
Further debate? This lady right here? No?
I do. I do think we need to reconsider this, because it's not just, we're banning water. You need to look at all bottles, and it needs to go back to the drawing board and done properly. You can't just ban the healthiest drink on the planet. You've got to look at the whole thing, and I think it just needs to go back to the drawing board and rewrite it. So, I think we should readdress it.
Any further debate on reconsideration?
Water can be purchased in a can. I think that is a good solution for now, and this should be brought back to a future town meeting. I move to end the, I don't, sorry.
You don't need to move anything. Any further debate on the motion to reconsider? Okay, Mr. Ryan.
I think it's very important to realize Harwich's water is AAA, and that's our safest water to drink. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think you're ready for a vote on the motion for reconsideration. If this passes, it requires a three-fourth majority to prevail, then we'll go back and reconsider Article 35. All those in favor of reconsideration so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
I rule it did not get the necessary three-quarters vote and is not reconsidered. I'll now recognize Mr. Hughes for the purpose of making a motion to adjourn the annual town meeting.
Mr. Moderator, I move adjourn the annual town meeting.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the annual town meeting. All those in favor of adjournment so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Meeting's adjourned, all those opposed may remain.